Welcome and good evening to the City Council meeting for April 29, 2024. Please let the record show that we started the meeting at 6:30. All councilors and the mayor are present or accounted for. The mayor and councillor Parks have been excused. If we can have a moment for the Pledge of Allegiance, please rise.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America in two thousand and which states that one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice across all.
You may be seated. This brings us to the next part of our agenda, the general. We have no general. Do we have any committee correspondents to counsel? With no committee correspondents, we will move to public comment. Let me grab that list. Sorry. Please remember to state your name and your address, and please limit your conversation to three minutes. Can we have Nick Adams, please?
Good evening. My name is Nick Adams. I live at 19 Mechanic Street, and I'm here to talk about a few different subjects, pretty much all relating to the budget process and just how we're using that budget. So first, I'm going to talk about something you probably were hoping I wouldn't, which is the ecology school. I'm actually speaking in favor of the ecology school, but not probably how you're expecting. I think there was maybe some things happening last week during public comment, which was that there were people from the ecology school talking to you, but I don't know that you heard everything they said. Mary Martin, the chair of the Ecology School Board, said that they only have $250,000 set aside for this project. Donna Lee Stockwell, their business manager, said that they tried to seek traditional funding, but no financial institutions were willing to finance this project because of lack of collateral, so that's not an option. Leanna Bonds, their director of advancement and community partnerships, said, "I can tell you that there are not potential funders who are willing to contribute this." So with them being $58,000 short of the minimum contribution, and given that the rate of cost increase in this project most likely is going to mean that there will be overages, I just ask, who's going to pay for that? How is that going to be paid for? And I think the concern is that by doing the BPI, you may actually be saddling the ecology school with money that they can't, or with debt that they can't afford to pay. And I don't think it's in anyone's interest. I think we do have a problem, I also don't think they should be paying $1 million for Turning Lane, that we, as several of you have stated in past meetings, probably don't need. I think there are other alternatives. That's for the planning board to decide. That's for Main DOT and Public Works. Well, I'm talking about the budget because I just wonder, we have a limited budget. How do we want to use that as a city? And I think that maybe $1 million on the Turning Lane isn't how we want to use it, or even our $308,000. I think there are important things you guys are going to hear tonight from really important organizations that contributed a lot to the quality of life in Saco. You're going to hear from amazing, about amazing things that Saco Main Street is doing. When I was a new resident here last year, I was so encouraged when I saw all the amazing things that Saco Main Street was doing. They were encouraging everyone to get involved and to feel a part of this community. I learned about BSUB Transit and all the great things that they're doing. And you're going to hear tonight from them, and you're going to hear about the fact that there is money. You guys talked last week about leaving money on the table. There is money being left on the table with BSUB Transit because they actually have more match funding available, but they don't have enough community funding, so that money is actually just sitting there. So I want to encourage you, you know, fund them as much as you can, because BSUB Transit is doing great things. And in age-friendly Saco, of course, the great work that they do, just want to encourage you all to look at the budget and just think, where can we be spending the money for the best good? Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is, I believe it's Chris Talbert. Good evening.
My name is Chris Talbert. I live at 6 Chelsea Circle, and I wanted to talk to you this evening about the funding request for Saco Main Street. As a Saco resident, I've been in town here for about 20 years, and I've really appreciated over the years the different events that Saco Main Street has sponsored and facilitated for the city, including the art show in the summer, the car shows, the concert series that they do, the ideas of bringing the community together. I especially loved seeing the community come together for things like the Harvest Festival and the Winter Festival, where you brought all of the families downtown and actually got a lot of participation with the youth. So that was always such a great thing for me to see, and a couple of years ago, I was inspired to actually volunteer to help make that happen. I have a young family here in town as well, and I want to make sure that we have that great kind of program and continue for my daughter and all the other kids in the area. But one thing I wanted to mention as well is that with Saco Main Street, it's been a group that's been in a lot of transition over the last few years. There's been a lot of change going on with personnel, both on the board, in the executive director role, as well as what Saco Main Street wants to contribute to the community. And I wanted to talk briefly about how we're looking to expand what we're doing as a group, something that has been neglected in a sense, because while these great events are bringing people downtown, there are about 130 small businesses in our historic district that are really working usually Monday through Friday, regular hours. They're not necessarily there or open on the weekends when these people are coming down for the different events. So we're looking, as an organization, to be able to offer more for all of these businesses as well, to help support them, to make them strive or thrive within our community. We worked with a program this past year on our pitch competition, where we provided funding for small businesses and entrepreneurs to be able to invest in their own businesses and be able to get a foothold in their business. We also made with that program a lot of connections with them, as far as being able to connect with the Chamber of Commerce, the local banking institutions, as well as other agencies that can help people get in touch with grants or loans, low-interest loans, to be able to start a business, so that we can have a great downtown. And I'm hoping you'll continue to support Saco Main Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Talbert. Last on the list is Don Pylon.
Don Pylon, 16 Glenhaven Circle. Assistant Mayor. At the public hearing, you're going to have a public hearing tonight on the school referendum?
That's correct.
Okay. Can I speak at the public hearing?
You may.
Okay. I'm going to wait until then.
Okay. Understood. Thank you. Anybody else who's not on the list would like to address the council, please come on up, in orderly fashion?
My name is Sheldon Nightingale, 7th Ward. I didn't really plan on speaking tonight, but Gene asked me to get up. As you can see, I'm a representative of age-friendly Saco, and I just want to let you know, we really appreciate what the town does for us, and I hope the town appreciates, you know, what we do in turn. I think we have a tremendous organization, and we provide a lot of services to people in our age group. And unfortunately, Gene is going to be like the last on the agenda tonight, and probably a lot of us that are here in support will probably leave because it's past our bedtime.
I only read the agenda. I didn't say anything.
But anyway, I mean, I don't have, Gene has all the facts and figures, and she has a beautiful presentation that she's going to give. And I just want to encourage you guys, and probably unnecessarily, but to, you know, really strongly consider, you know, our requests and, you know, and honor that if you have in the past, because I really, really do believe this organization is a tremendous asset to the town. And, you know, we get people coming up to us all the time and thanking us, you know, for what we do. And in turn, I want to thank you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nightingale. Any other speakers?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm David Plavon. I live at 36 Lower Beach Road. I'm here to address the council tonight because the BSUB budget is going to be discussed or the presentation. Two years ago, BSUB decided that they would no longer support the trolley run between Camp Ellis and Old Orchard Beach. So tonight, I'm up here asking that the city would, to the city to reconsider that route. I think Camp Ellis has recovered well from recent storms, and the business atmosphere down there is growing. There's a lot of interest in that we should be able to support a modified schedule, maybe four days a week as opposed to seven, and just running the old trolley route that ran from Camp Ellis to Old Orchard Beach. So I would ask our members on the council, councillor Hatch, the city administrator, if they could find out how much it would cost to fund that route, and then if it became something that we thought was feasible, that it become a budget item instead of asking BSUB to, you know, go back and find a way to pay for it, because I don't think they can, nor have we had any success in asking them prior. So that's my request. We're happy to work with you. We have a couple of people in Camp Ellis that are very interested in doing this, and I think it would be, I think it would be a very worthwhile addition to what's going on down there. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Plavon. Anybody else?
Stephen Hewitt, 380 Main Street, Saco Main. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and the members of the Saco City Council. My name is Stephen Hewitt. I'm one of the trustees of the Dyer Library and Saco Museum. I stand for you in support of the new library and museum director, Sophie Smith, who will be presenting later this evening. The Dyer Library and Saco Museum is a unique place within our community that provides more than just books, periodicals, DVDs, and online access. It's an after-school place for our school-aged children, programs and activities for the young, and a high school study space. At the same time, it's a gathering place for older members of our community, a place for adult groups to meet, and a resource for everyone in between. On behalf of the trustees, I thank you for the council, for the continued support, and encourage you all to make the funding of the Dyer Library and Saco Museum a priority for our growing city. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Hewitt. Any other speakers? Come on up.
Hi, good evening. My name is Alan Waugh. I'm one of the new owners of Hewitt Seafood Restaurant at 29 Eastern Avenue in Saco, Maine. I am here as well to ask that you consider bringing the trolley back to Camp Ellis. When my partners and I bought the restaurant two years ago, what we had in mind was to continue the traditions that had been built over the years in Camp Ellis with Hewitts. I know we've done some great things over the past two years with bringing back the Harbor Fest, but when we bought the business, we remembered places like Wormwood's, Mitchy Moore, Maxi's, and the pier, and Camp Ellis was bustling at that time, and those are some of the things that we're looking to bring back. As David said earlier, you know, we're looking for different ways to help generate revenue, whether it be, number one, subsidizing and finding out how much the cost for the drivers for that route, like David said, a modified route. We think four days a week, instead of every hour on the hour how it was before, we would even consider, you know, every other hour would be a great thing. And then also, if there's anything that we could do to help generate revenue as well by getting sponsorship and stuff like that, those are some things that we definitely would consider, especially now with the dredge project that's been approved by the governor and the Army Corps of Engineers. This is something we want to build for in the future over the next two or three years, and having your support would definitely go a long way to help generate more revenue in that area overall. I think a lot of people say, oh, we want people to be able to go to Old Orchard Beach, but now we, there's a reason for them to come to Camp Ellis more than anything else, and also enjoy what we have to offer down there as well. So thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Waugh. Any other speakers for the public comment section? Again, we will have a public hearing for the school.
Hi, my name is Ray Smith. I live at 27 Lower Beach Road. I've been there for about five years now. One year ago, my wife Kim and I opened up the Camp Ellis General Store and Lobster Pound. When we first moved to this community, we had trolley service. My family used it quite a bit, friends used it quite a bit. What I noticed, there was a lot of people walking the streets. They were going to the trolley, coming from the trolley, and foot traffic was heavier with the trolley service. I'm here to ask that maybe the city can help us get this trolley service back. I think it's very important to both Hewitts and myself and the whole community altogether. This is one more tool that we need in addition to all the work that's being done for the erosion. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other speakers?
Chelsea Hill, 108 Bradley Street. I did not plan to speak tonight, but I'm glad I came. I came because I'm on the BPAC, and it is in support of the resolution endorsing May as National Bike Month. But what I see on the agenda tonight is a lot of organizations that would really benefit from safer conditions in Saco for walking and biking, and I'm hearing a lot about transit, which is great. We know that it feels better to walk and bike when there are fewer cars on the road, and I think what you're hearing tonight is a lot of organizations that are doing amazing things for people who want to extend their quality of life by exercising more and being outdoors and enjoying this beautiful city that we have. And I also just want to remind you that as you consider the budget, that the Federal Highway Safety Administration adjusted the cost for communities that experience injuries and deaths in traffic-related crashes. And I will correct myself in an email tomorrow if I'm wrong, but I believe that the least serious injuries are valued at $550,000 per incident, with a death costing the community $11 million. So the more that we can do in 2023, that means we experienced an impact of $22 million with the two pedestrian deaths. The more that we can do to reduce our reliance on automobiles and make biking and walking and access to public transit better, the less costs that we will have to bear as a community through crash, crashes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Any other speakers? Any other speakers? All right, we'll move on to the next section of the, whoop, sorry, oh, Ms. Brown, sorry about that.
I understand your urge to move on. I'm Inka Brown. I live at 161 Simpson Road. A couple of different items this evening. I did want to also lend my support for the resolution endorsing May as National Bike Month, and as I thought about this item, it also ties into the upcoming important community-wide vote on our new school construction. As a parent, I recently received a newsletter, and I read the newsletter, and I was very pleased to see that we are very effectively promoting to our community the four major impacts of our new school construction and the location. And one of those impacts is the Eastern Trail location, and that ties into this community is poised to have our young students be able to bike quite safely to this new school location. So I think that with all of the attention on safety and pedestrians, that it will be a very exciting time in the near future to reinvigorate the interest in biking and that our students will be able to bike safely in groups and potentially with parent leaders or community leaders who also lead them on that Eastern Trail. I also wanted to quickly also say my support for the Dyer Library. As a former trustee, I am very well aware of the gem that we have here in our community, and when I travel to other communities, I visit their public libraries, and I think the community support and the financial support for your local library tells a lot about the priorities of a community. Lastly, I did want to circle back to the item before the council and the BPI vote. I wanted to thank the council for tabling that item, five to two, and for your request for further information. That information, of course, is for further legal opinion, financial capacity of the applicant, and compliance. And I would like to state this evening that I think it would be very wise for council to seek outside independent legal review of these items. Council has done this many times before, and just in September, this council authorized that attorney Langsdorf, an independent lawyer, looked at the process for the citizen's grievance. And because of the clarity needed on this, the optics of this, and the track record of this, I would like to request of this, I would like to request that you consider that. I think there are many differing opinions amongst counselors on the language of the condition of approval. I think that needs clarity. There needs to be more clarity on the legal process between contract zones and the site plan ordinance and where they intersect. And I think if you review the contract zone agreement, one of the items was that the applicant shall submit evidence of financial capacity and technical ability as part of the site plan application. And the ecology school received that approval from the planning board, and thereby, if you look at the contract zone, I think we have some issues around compliance and even violations in that review. So I would just ask you for that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Brown. Any other speakers?
Barbara Coleman, 386 Buxton Road. What is BTE? Please, when using acronyms that people don't know, it would be nice if we know what they're talking about. So could anyone educate me?
You're more than welcome. BPI is a business partnership agreement?
No.
Or something today.
I'm speaking.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Any other speakers? Any other speakers? One more time. Any other speakers? All right, we will move on to the next portion of the agenda, which is the approval of the minutes for April 10, 2024. Do we have a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Take the roll call vote. Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. Do we have a motion to... Next on the agenda would be consent items. Do we have a motion to accept the consent items as presented?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Anybody want to pull an item? All right, we'll go to roll call vote. Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Yeah, the eyes have it, five zero. Motion passes. All right, we'll go on to the next item of the agenda, which is action items. We have a one-reading resolution endorsing May as National Bike Month. I believe that is for Counselor Berman. Just got to get my computer up. It is.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. The B-PAC co-chairs Chris Nucci and Bob Hamlin have requested planning staff's assistance to bring forward the attached resolution endorsing May as National Bike Month. If City Council passes this resolution, it will join others throughout the country working with the League of American Bicyclists. If it pleases the council, I'd like to read the resolution, as I know they worked hard on the language. So this is a resolution endorsing May as National Bike Month. Whereas, the League of American Bicyclists promotes May as National Bike Month, which is celebrated in communities from coast to coast, and whereas National Bike Month was established in 1956 to showcase the many benefits of biking and encouraging individuals to try biking, and whereas biking brings people together, encourages discovery, and fosters community engagement, and whereas biking can integrate physical activity into an individual's daily routine, and whereas biking reduces greenhouse gas emissions, air pollution, and reliance on fossil fuels, and whereas biking helps to eliminate traffic congestion and the need for large parking lots and other externalities of automobile usage, and whereas all bicyclists, whether riding for fun, fitness, or functionality, are part of the movement for safer streets, connected communities, happier people, and a healthier planet. Be it resolved that the city of Saco hereby recognizes May 2024 as National Bike Month, be it further resolved that the city of Saco hereby recognizes May 5, 2024, as National Ride a Bike Day, be it further resolved that the city of Saco hereby recognizes May 13 to May 19, 2024, as Bike to Work Week, be it further resolved that the city of Saco hereby recognizes May 17, 2024, as Bike to Work Day, be it ordered that the Saco City Council approves a resolution endorsing May as National Bike Month, and I move to approve the order.
We have a motion to approve the resolution endorsing May as National Bike Month. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Counselor Berman?
I'd just like to thank the B-PAC for bringing this forward. I think drawing attention to safer streets, exercise, and bicycling goes a long way towards raising this issue into the public consciousness. So thank you to the B-PAC.
Any other councilors like to add to the discussion? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm supportive of this, and I just additionally would like to emphasize to those that do not bike, there likely hopefully will be more bicycles on the road, so let's be aware of this and do a better job than we currently do. Thank you.
Any other discussion on this motion? All right, roll call vote. Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. That brings us on to the item B of the action item, which is the public hearing, which is authorization of referendum question to appear on June 11, 2024 ballot. Do we have a motion? Well, that is assigned to?
You.
Me.
I'm happy to read it, Mr. Wilson.
It is now going to be reassigned to Counselor Johnston.
Thank you. The referendum question approves adoption of the bond order entitled Order Authorizing the City of Saco to Borrow an Amount Not to Exceed $140,749,348 to Finance Construction of a Grade 1 through Grade 5 School and a Pre-Kin kindergarten and kindergarten School, as established and written by City Bond Council E. Williams Stockmeyer. The total project will be funded with 28% local share and 72% state share. The staff recommends that the city council approve the final reading of the order in substantially the same form as presented. I move to open the public hearing.
We have a motion to open the public hearing for item B. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote. Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
The public hearing is open. Do we have any members of the public that would like to speak? Please come to the podium, address your name, your address, and please limit conversation to three minutes, please.
Don Pylon, 16 Glen Haven Circle. I have some comments to make about this proposal. Like any big project in any municipality, there are always needs and wants. I participated in the siting committee, and we looked at multiple locations, and we looked at the middle school as a possible location, and we looked at it because we thought that perhaps the ability to keep all our economies of scales was really what we were looking for. Busing everyone there together, it was just a good fit. However, that was off the table. This location, I just personally don't feel it's a good location. I was the only one that voted on the siting committee against it. We had a criteria that we had mapped out, certain criteria that we tried to stay in that lane. One was commutability for children, the ability for neighborhood children to be able to bike to school safely. This is way out in the auto mile, and although someone mentioned just recently that they would be able to commute on the trail, in the winter months, in the fall months, it gets dark early, I can only see in my mind that we're going to now have to light it somehow, solar, maybe. So that's something down the road, and we'll have to deal with that later. But with any large project, there's always needs and wants. What do we truly need, and what do we want? And I went through the budget. I looked at it, and I could peel off five or six million dollars on the wants side. It's always great to, you know, fatten it up in the beginning, but the bottom line is there's 38, 39 million dollars that taxpayers in this town are going to fund, and there are just so many dollars that you can squeeze out of the people here in town. There are people on fixed incomes, and although the council decided not to raise taxes this year, next year, I think the town is in a posture to do a reevaluation, and that is going to push values up, and that's going to push taxes up. So this proposal has to be reevaluated to cull out some of the fat so that it makes it more palatable for the people that just are not able to pay that $300 or $400 that the superintendent has put in in this budget. The other thing, the last thing I just want to mention is, when I sat on this siting committee, there is a... This is the picture. The school, as you come into the site from Route 1, the school is in the, what I call the good green area, but if you want to get to that Eastern Trail, there's a water course that separates the school from the Eastern Trail. When I looked at the budget, I didn't see any indication of the bridge that we discussed in the site, in that siting committee, and that was hundreds of thousands of dollars to build a bridge across that water course to get to that Eastern Trail. So unless it's in... I couldn't find the number, but it's hundreds of thousands of dollars. So I don't know where that number is, and I don't know if they accounted for it in the construction budget. So there's a lot of questions here that have to be answered before that June 11, you know. So anyway, those are my questions and my concerns, and they should be the taxpayers' concerns as well. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Waugh. Ms. Coleman?
Barbara Coleman, 386 Buxton Road, Saco, Maine. Mayor, councilors, city administrator, today I sent you an email prior to coming to the meeting. I have spent many years dealing with the DEP, EPA, on various buildings within the community. This goes back to 2015, where they wanted to start building a 300 development, housing development off the Flag Pond Road. I immediately called EPA, DEP, and immediately a call was made to the city administrator at that time, Kevin Sullivan, to stop the process, because they had not bothered to ask for an evaluation of those 300 homes and what was going to be the impact. Well, the impact is, you don't see those 300 homes because Saco illegally put up 50 homes without permission. And the former mayor, as well as the former, but it was Joe Guns, Counselor Guns' position, Bill Doyle, is well aware of it because he was part of this process. There's another counselor who sits on this committee that has read a couple of the DEP reports for me. He goes, I am sorry, I am not a scientist. I don't understand all those long words. That is not my field. My field is figuring out what is not right about something. It's called the sniff test. Well, the sniff test is this. We're asking to borrow money for a school out on Otter Island, as I call it. That has existed for all my lifetime, and I'm much hold to looking that I appear, and I have talked to many individuals, and actually, I talked to three individuals just alone from the Maine Department of Environmental Protection. They do not have a permit. So if you look at page eight of an Adobe Acrobat document I sent you, which is a 900-page report that was approved by Augusta, on page eight, you will see they admit to the fact that even on the ground level, the borings are showing problems. What they're not looking at, and for few who understand, is all of the material from the waste that's coming over from the opposite side of where the school would be placed, which would be to my right right now. You've got all of those, which includes the veterinarian clinic, which used to incinerate dogs, cats, and waste. Where do you believe all that material went to? Right across the street, into the woods and all that. You actually have a piece of land, a million-dollar one that has to be purchased. On it, in a report that I have provided several times, there are tanks that are still full. It showed it in 1988. It showed it in 2007, and this is data all from the state of Maine that you can get offline yourself. I have presented this to the superintendent. I presented this question to the superintendent, and I am still bothered by the answer. Individuals K through 5 do a certain thing that most individuals from sixth to eighth do not do, or high school. What do most of those children do during the daytime that the rest of them do not do? It's a puzzle, but it's a simple answer. They go out to recess. They're going to be playing on those fields. So every time it rains or snow, the cadamins from underneath are going to come up through the ground to that upper layer. How are we going to protect our children? What's going to happen to them 40 or 50, 60 years from now? What diseases, you know, and illnesses are they going to have from all of this? They have not even requested a permit. Oh, I've got a timeout compared to most people?
Nope, you've got an extra. I've been giving extra time because it's a significant impact on the budget.
Right. This is a public event, so...
Yeah, and your three minutes are over. If you could wrap up your...
So, the end result is, is before we move forward on bonding, let's first get our permit, get the EPA in, because you can't even dig to bore any section of that area until you have a DEP permit, which means you can't dig far enough down to find the problems that have existed. So we are missing our processes, and all of that, why? Who was not on top of it? Because if I could figure out the problem, I would think any of you would be able to.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman.
You're welcome.
Any other items? Public hearing related to the school? Any other? Go ahead.
Kevin Roach, 18 Vines Road. I was on the school site selection committee. Now I'm on the school board, but I was on the site committee beforehand. All the stuff that's been talked about in this public session has been addressed, and the superintendent is more than willing to give the 952-page report that the state provided with environmental, with everything about the site, everything about the building, and I know it's in the hands of certain members of the public. So I would suggest that if you're really into the details of this and the site, to please ask for that report and read it. I have heard about the site, about potential mysterious pollution, all right? That has been looked at. Now, unless there's other expertise that wants to come in here and paid for by private citizens, come on in. But we have selected the best site available for our children. Again, let me repeat, the best site that was available for the children. And if there isn't any other priority for our taxpayers beyond... And again, you know I'm part of Save Our Shores, which is dear to my heart, but this is right there, if not more, right there. And we have gone over sites. We were thwarted on the Switzer site. The Switzer site, we didn't bring that up yet. And we looked at the middle school, and that is out there for the concentration of our downtown and coastal residents and the growth you see out in Cascade. So I'm really not speaking... I don't think I'm necessarily speaking to the council here. I'm speaking to the B-PAC. to the public, that that is where Saco's growth is. And that's on our major highway, in the center, and in that area, Saco is ready to go. And now we have kids throughout the city, Thorndale Academy, middle school, and now on the north side of Saco. I can't be more excited. I cannot be more excited. And I thank you, council, for getting this bond question to where it's at now, and looking forward to make history in June. Thank you.
Thank you, school board member Roach. Anybody else would like to speak on this public hearing? Anybody else want, we have superintendent?
Good evening, everybody. Good to see you all. Jeremy Ray, Superintendent of Schools, also a resident of Saco Maine, 6 Skyline Drive. If any of you guys have any questions about the environmental piece, there's a 952-page report that was submitted to the Department of Education for two rounds of processes. Not only first in our process, as we've been working on this for over three years, and very thankful for people like Kevin, Dawn, who served on site selection committee, to try to select the best site for our children that was available. Kevin was right. Very interesting challenge that I never thought about in cities and municipalities of this size, of making sure that you have 20-plus acres plus 100 acre for every child that would be in the school. Our process, as you remember, is that the first part of it was just getting site approval at the Department of Education. So the Department of Education looked at all of the materials that we provided about land, traffic, all of those pieces to first approve the site. And then if you remember, we were back here talking about concept being the building and the envelope and those costs. We're fortunate here in Saco that we're going to have the opportunity to vote on a project that is going to be funded by 72% from the state of well over $101 million, leaving about $39 million for the local taxpayers. This was a project that, as we've all done our research, I believe it was 2000, the winter of 2004. So 20 years, this challenge has been set in front of us as a community. And we're here and on the opportunity, based off the hard work that people on the school department's side, citizens, the hours that you have put in over the last couple of years listening to all of these pieces, our teachers, our parents, and it's our, our time has come to put this question before the voters in an opportunity as it will be up or down. We're excited about our plans, we appreciate the support, and we have done a lot of hard work to make sure that we are on the path that we feel will be workable for our children and for the future of Saco. And I ask all of you, just like I said at the school committee meeting, about a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, there was a great article about some of the neighboring communities around us that are dealing with school construction issues. Upwards of $160 million locally in Scarborough, upwards of $100 million locally in Cape Elizabeth, $82 million for a slimmed-down plan in Cumberland North Yarmouth. And we're going to have the opportunity to vote on $39 million to replace all schools pre-K through five in Saco. What an awesome opportunity we have for our community, and I thank you guys for all your support.
Thank you, Superintendent Ray. Any other speakers? Any other speakers? All right, do we have a motion to close the public hearing? That'd be Counsel Johnson.
I moved to close the public hearing.
We have a motion to close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Counsel Gunn?
Yes.
Counsel Berman?
Yes.
Counsel Hatch?
Yes.
Counsel Hewitt?
Yes.
Counsel Johnson?
Yes.
Eyes have it, 5-0, motion passes to close public hearing. Do we have a motion?
City of Saco hereby ordains and approves the final reading of the following order in the same form as presented. Order authorizing the city of Saco to borrow an amount not to exceed $140,749,348 to finance construction of a grade one through grade five school and a pre-kindergarten and kindergarten school in order that the item be placed on the June 11th, 2024 ballot.
We have a motion to approve the final reading as read, presented. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Do we have any discussion on this? Counsel Johnson?
Thank you. I got to kind of catch my thoughts here because I honestly wasn't really prepared for some of the comments I received from the public. I was hoping for a much more positive approach to this, but it's just some of the things I wrote down to address, and I don't normally address public comments, but for starters, as superintendent indicated, this is 72% state-funded. I would hope, I could be wrong, but I would hope that those that are employed by the state or elected by the state that authorize expenditures would have done their own due diligence or will in the future before they spend 72% of this overall cost. And again, the question before us, as it says, is an authorization to spend up to. That doesn't mean the minute it passes or it doesn't pass that the expenditures immediately happen. We have a wastewater plant that had a $50 million approval, to my knowledge, only portions of that, maybe not any of it, has been spent. So yes, there will be permitting process, there's still a planning board process, there's many more processes before us, but as has been indicated, this has been a lengthy process. I mean, this is a huge moment for all of us. I personally, as I've said many times now, have spent 10 years working towards this Two decades, right? That's what we just heard the superintendent say. So I was 20 years old, so half my life I spent waiting for some kind of solution to not just Young School, but Fairfield School and C.K. Burns School. Like I said, for me, I came in here pretty excited. I will say that, you know, I am a bit deflated in that sense, only because I feel this is a last moment ditch effort to throw out some language about contamination or something when, again, this process has been vetted to a point. That's fear mongering. It's not something that I subscribe to. In 2016, again, I hate repeating myself because I know I've said this, but in 2016, I sat here as a member of council with three other members of council that chose a path that was unpopular at the time, right? We chose to rescind a vote to go to bond for a replacement of just Young School with this moment in mind, meaning we want the state aid, this school construction process so that we could address more than one problem. Here we are. I certainly never thought we'd be talking about $140-plus million, but that's the reality. I'm certainly not rich, I'm certainly not wealthy. I mean, hell, I'm looking at $60,000 roof replacement, you know? Some of my councilors have heard me say that. I don't know where I'm going to come up with the money. But I certainly will look at my tax bill once this is approved, and there'll be a sense of joy knowing that, you know, we solved a problem. So, you know, something I just quickly this afternoon wrote down, some of the things we've done in the last three decades here in Saco. We've renovated this very room, this building, we've built a new police station, we've built, or purchased, rather, purchased and renovated the armory, constructed rec fields at Foss Road, brand-new central fire department or station. We have a new transportation center, a brand-new DPW garage, and as I stated, are currently working towards a $50 million wastewater recovery plant. The last thing on this list is our schools. I mean, I think the superintendent said it best, the time is now. Our schools, for those of you that haven't been there, that, you know, grandparents, parents that, or those that aren't parents, that haven't been back in these schools since they went through them, Counselor Hatch, you indicated to me several weeks back that you had an opportunity to go to Fairfield and read since your children were there. That's the first time you've been back in those schools since then. And you indicated you were startled or surprised at how deplorable they really are. I don't know how you don't move this forward. I understand the cost, I understand it's not necessarily the best location. It wasn't my first election, you know? As it was indicated, the best location got ripped out from under us. But it is the only location. And I said that going into this three years ago, when I first got on that site committee, because I was well aware, because I had spent three years prior looking at where we potentially could place this school, knowing that we were on the list. There are no other suitable locations. So, you know, I, with that, I just, I hope the community at the very least votes, right? I would never tell people how to vote, but just please vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. As I have indicated to you, I'd like to submit my comments for the record. Given the enormity of the task and the long process that has led us to this moment, if the mayor and council will indulge me, I'd like to make a few comments. First, I'd like to thank each and every person who in the last two decades have played a role in this process, from elected officials to staff to the citizens of Saco overall. While the city did not by any measure break a speed record getting to this point, what we lacked in brevity, we more than made up for in our committed and at times passionate civil discourse. It has taken me some time to come to my decision. My past criticisms of the process, beginning with the council's decision a few years ago to forego local bonds in favor of applying for the state list and the conditions tied to it, to the process of selecting the final site and the composition of the project, are all on the record, and I do not wish to relitigate the past. Up until fairly recently, I was inclined to oppose this project, essentially on the grounds that the state's conditions regarding the size of the property require the school department to land in the Millbrook Business Park, a decision that I still feel is not ideally situated, given the city's low industrial footprint and the needs of commuters to have a reliable way in and out of the city that isn't the turnpike or the back roads. If it was the city's intention to leave the Portland Road Corridor untouched for the foreseeable future, aside from plopping two brand-new schools down in place of any new business that could bring in revenues to offset our tax, our residents' tax burden, I would gladly have voted no on this. In the last several months, I have been able to observe the discussions being held by the Long Range Planning Committee in my capacity as one of the two council liaisons to the group. For those unaware, it is the committee's job to look at for ways the city can implement the goals of the state-mandated comprehensive plan for growth and development while retaining the city's character and other intangibles that make Saco what it is. To that end, under the assistance of our talented and dedicated planning staff, led by city planner Emily Cole Prescott, the group has been reimagining the long-term configuration of what the Portland Road Corridor will look like in the decades to come. With a stretch being the most ideal part of the city to address our pressing affordable housing and business needs, the idea to marry those concepts and to reintroduce zoning that will encourage utilizing the interior of both sides of Route One, similar to what we are seeing with Cascade Falls or in West Scarborough, has been met with enthusiasm by the committee as they continue to discuss it. To that end goal, having a third of Saco's students in that part of town would make sense. Again, we are talking long-term. The businesses and the properties out there don't have to call the movers. On the contrary, the businesses that are already there could capitalize on this development. This is a tremendous opportunity for the car dealerships out there to help with boosters and other fundraisers with the new school, something that every parent of a kid under 12 will appreciate when they drive past their establishments five days a week to pick up and drop off their student. I can tell you that the Auto Mile Diner and Go See Tice BBQ may have been way ahead of the curb in having their establishments so close to a school. Is this the ideal place for a school as it stands right now? No. But long-term, as a catalyst to reimagine and redevelop the community in that part of the city, it has the potential. But that will not happen in a vacuum. It will take successive councils, planning boards, members of staff, and dedicated and involved citizens to make it a reality. Growth will come. Anyone who thinks otherwise only has to look at state laws like LD 2003 to see what is in store for communities who think they can gatekeep the inevitable. What we do have is agency on the local level to organize and manage that growth. In my case, seeing this potential negative as a possible positive is my way of searching for a yes, as opposed to defaulting to being against it. In that, I would encourage both this council and potential future councilors out there to think about what it means to open yourself up to possibilities instead of playing it safe from your own preconceived notions, well-intentioned as they may be. Like me, you might be surprised where you land. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Counsel Gunn. Any other discussion? Counsel Hewitt, go ahead.
Is there any way to clarify the wording? It's a little bit daunting when you look at it and the fact that the $140 million is the first you see. When you think about it, if this building, if the cost is going to be spread over 20 years, the $40 million the taxpayers are going to pay is only going to be $2 million per year on the city. So it's not nearly as...
I believe this was drafted by legal counsel and we approved it, but I will go to our city administrator for further guidance.
Certainly, Your Honor. The bond counsel followed certain provisions that are in the state statute. So the way he has framed this question is how he would frame it for anybody else. It's a matter of items that have to be in the question, and if you look on to what will be coming forward with the question, you'll see that there is an accompanying financial statement on there as well. Within the bond question, when it's on the ballot, you'll see that there will be clearly stated that 72% state share and city share of 28%. The third paragraph in the referendum question that's going to be available is the responsibility for project bond payments, and it shows the amount of money. So for example, the non-state-funded portion of grade one through five, as you alluded to, is $7.9 million over that 20 years. So, you know, I think it's going to be important relative to any type of public engagement with not only the school board but others to kind of highlight those areas. And certainly, it is on where people will be able to see it as they go in the voting booth to make their decision. So it has to be the way the bond counsel has written it. We have to keep it that way. I even checked with him last week just to make sure this question was okay to have the way we put it on the agenda.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do you have anything else you'd like to add? Any other councilors like to speak? Any other counselor like to speak? Counsel Hatch?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I get incited to speak, fellow Counselor Johnson. I don't, I really appreciate Counselor Gunn, your comments. I really appreciate your open-mindedness. I want Counsel Johnson to know that I appreciate the comments and the history that you've given us, as I typically do. I'm so old, I don't have any kids in the school system. In fact, I'm so old, my grandchildren aren't in the school system. But I'm going to tell you, for 40 years, sitting in this, living in this city, and with my children, I want to go back to the Fairfield example that I shared with Counselor Johnson. When our three daughters were at Fairfield, my wife and I were extremely active in the PTO. We did a lot for the school, the school did a lot for our kids. We have very fond memories, and when I was called back or asked to read to the second grade children, I jumped at the opportunity. And I have to tell you that I was absolutely appalled at the conditions that we are asking our teachers and our kids to learn in. The environment is awful. It's crowded, we have desks in the hallway. This is no way to, our kids deserve more than what we're giving them. And I've been on that roller coaster ride for many, many decades. I'm just really happy to be here. I'm a taxpayer, my taxes are going to go up. I'm looking forward to going to that open house and enjoying the fruits of everybody's labor for many, many years. And I think any effort to second-guess all of the hard work that has come to this point is... is extremely counterproductive. And I would ask that those who tend to go in that direction to think twice before you drag us that way. This is a great moment for the city of Saco, and we should all be very proud.
Councillor Berman?
I didn't want to be the only councillor not to speak. I was feeling left out. I was one of the members of the public that I'm sure wrote councillor Johnson a nasty gram when the council decided to withdraw the bond question for a locally funded school because I didn't see this day as coming. I didn't imagine that we would make it to the top of the list. I didn't imagine at that time that we could have a project that was 72% funded by the school that I could see. And I knew even at that moment that the need was urgent. But here we are with a project that is 72% funded by the school, that has an estimated lifespan of 75 years. We are at the precipice of changing the direction of Saco. I also want to point out that now as a Saco resident for 15 or 16 years, we moved here for the schools. We moved here because of the family atmosphere. We moved here because of the small town and safety. We moved here because our kids could walk and bike and engage with others, and because they would have an excellent education all along the way. This is what we do in Saco. We support our kids. We support our students, and we raise the next generation to be prepared for what the future is going to bring. And this is an opportunity to do that and take care of it for the foreseeable future. I would also just point out that there is no Plan B. There is no other site waiting in the wings to put these schools at. There is no adequate backup plan if these bonds fail to pass. This is the plan. It's the best plan. It's been worked on for years, and it's the only current viable plan. So I'm so happy to be here and happy to see the support of council and what I hope will be the support of the public on June 11th.
Excuse me, Your Honor. May I just respectfully correct something councillor Berman said? It's 72% of state funding.
That's what I meant to say. 72% state-funded.
Correct.
Thank you to the administrator if I misspoke.
Any other councillor like a second shot at this? No, councillor Johnson, as always.
Well, you know, I can't let that, or this go. Again, going back to that percentage, I don't think it can be emphasized enough. 72%, or even if it was 50%, one of the big issues, as councillor Berman, you know, indicated when he was a parent, you know, advocating against rescinding was the idea that Saco would not get on the list. It was a calculated risk we all took, and we got on the list. And I think, you know, you don't have to travel that far around the state of Maine to other areas that are not nearly as fortunate as the city of Saco is with what's sitting, you know, in front of us. Right? I mean, I can go almost in any which direction and forget about the coastal communities, but go west and look at some of the small towns that have schools, you know, that are equally derelict. It's even to the point where I've seen some of them and kind of felt guilty. So, not that guilty, but I just, this is a one-shot. You know, this is the plan. It's the only plan, and it's time to act. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Last and final call. Are there any more comments? All right, roll call, vote. Councillor Gunn.
Yes.
Councillor Berman.
Yes.
Councillor Hatch.
Yes.
Councillor Hewitt.
Yes.
Councillor Johnson.
Enthusiastically, yes.
Perfect.
Motion passes 5-0 to send this motion to the voters. The council has done its job, and now it's up to the voters to finish this process. So I believe it's June 6th?
June 11th.
June 11th. Sorry, I'm off. I'll vote on June 6th. You can do it by, we have available ballots downstairs. So congratulations, council. I'm glad I can't vote, so I raise my hand. That doesn't count, but we are... All right, with the conclusion of item B, that concludes action items, and we're going on to new business, I will recess for 10 minutes to allow the auditor Timothy Gill to prep for his presentation of the CARF. Not the CARF, sorry, old language.
The Afcar.
Afcar. So.
The audit.
All right, we are, not adjourned, but we're in recess.
All right, we will turn from recess and start off with item 10, our new business under item, action A is the audit presentation to by to counsel by Tim Gill, our K O. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you for having me.
All right, Timothy, sorry.
Tim is fine.
Okay.
So, yeah, I have the presentation of the 2023 audit results, so for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2023. I have 13 slides, going to go over some of the highlights. All the counselors there have the ACFA, which is a nice 140-page document with lots of little tidbits of information. You can read that at your own leisure, but I'm going to go over the highlights tonight and help you kind of dissect it a little bit, focusing primarily on the general fund. We're going to talk a little bit about the general fund, the fund balance, which is your equity of both the general fund and the school operations fund, and then also going to talk about some of the property tax rates and some of the debt at the end of the presentation as well. So the big highlight, the summary of the audit results, is the financial statement opinion, our opinion on the financial statements. The whole point of audit is to give an opinion on the financial statements as to whether or not they are fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with all accounting standards and principles. So an unmodified opinion means we do believe that it's a clean opinion, that the financial statements are presented in accordance with all standards, and the data and financial information presented is materially accurate. I use the terminology materially. It's basically a fancy way of saying there's a margin of error built into what we do because we don't test 100% of transactions. We use a risk-based approach to kind of look at different areas of the city and the school to figure out where we think the highest risk is, and that's where we focus more of our testing. So it is not a, you know, absolute opinion, it's a margin error built in there. But unmodified is exactly what you want to get. Also, as part of the audit process, we issue reports required by government auditing standards. In this report, which has been provided to you in a PDF format, it describes, again, some of the audit process, some of the risk assessment procedures that we go through, and then as a byproduct of those risk assessment procedures, we test internal controls. So we look at your policies, your procedures, and then we test those policies and procedures. Are you doing what you say you're supposed to be doing? And if you're not, we will give you a comment in that report, we'll give you a written comment. We're required to classify those comments into three categories, the most severe being a material weakness, the next level down being significant deficiency, and then there's other kind of general recommendation things to improve operating efficiency. I'm happy to report there is no material weaknesses, which is really great, because those are things that you're going to want to pay attention to and act on immediately. There's no significant deficiencies, so those are kind of the next level down. So all we have are other comments, and the two comments that we have here to present tonight are repeat comments of the prior year audit as well. So within the middle school, the activity funds, they take in cash receipts for various activities, and then they spend that money. Usually in activity funds, you have a school secretary or somebody like that handling these funds. A lot of times that because it's kind of somebody who's not purposely trained in accounting, those controls and those procedures are a little more lax than what we find within City Hall here, or even the central office at the school department. So as a result, we find comments in the activity funds quite a lot when we go and do school audits. So here at the middle school, we found that three of the 20 cash receipts that we tested were not deposited in timely manner. Now, we define timely matter as kind of subjective, but usually it's within one week of receiving the funds. If you receive them on a Monday, they should be in the bank by Friday. So we found three of those transactions violated that kind of reasonableness test, and so we want to remind the council here and the school board that anytime you have cash receipts, they should be getting to the bank in a very quick and efficient manner. Ideally, it would be the same day, but I understand that sometimes that's not possible. So within five business days is usually what we'd like to target. The other comment we have, again, is a repeat comment, is the school payroll processing. We found that the way the system was calculating the employer contributions to the retirement funding was incorrect. It changes every year, and it also changes between different classes of employees, so it's quite hard to keep track of all that between the different classes of employees and the way it changes every year, especially when you're onboarding new teachers and retiring other ones as well. In addition, there was some turnover in that position during the year, which also led to this kind of confusion. So as a result, some of the employer contributions were not calculating correctly, and they weren't being put into the correct account lines and correct funds within the accounting system. Ultimately, the bills being paid to the pension plan were accurate and correct, it was just how they were being allocated internally that was incorrect. So we were going to remind the school council and management there as well to kind of develop a process to ensure that when people are coming in or making changes to their programs, that they're properly checked and made sure that those account withholdings are accurate for each individual employee, which is quite a arduous task. Any questions on those two comments before I move on to the next bullet point? Next bullet point is the reports required by the uniform guidance. This is the reports that we provide to you that details our testing over the grants that we test. So every year, the city and school department get grants that are federally funded and state-funded. Federally funded grants go through this uniform guidance testing procedure, we call it a single audit. During the year, there was approximately 4.4 million that was received and expended during the year in federal grants between the city and the school. Again, we go through a risk-based approach to figure out which grants we're going to test, because we can't test all the grants in any one year. So this year, we selected the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, or ARPA funds, to test on the city side, and then we tested the elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds, the ESSER funds, on the school side. The ARPA funds were about $640,000 tested, and then the ESSER funds were about 1.4 million. So combined, we tested about 2.1 million of the 4.4 million that was spent during the year of federal funds, so a little under 50%. Similar to the reports required by government auditing standards, if we have any findings or issues, we're required to report those in writing in our reports and then classify them into different categories. Happy to report on this that there are no findings to report under that single audit testing, which means that all the grant funding was spent in accordance with the regulation and rules that are set forth by the government, in our opinion. On the next couple of slides, you'll see that we have some more highlights, this time focusing more on the financial information of the year. Specifically, I've pulled information from Statement 6 and 6.1 in the ACFA, if you want to refer to that later on. Also, I'll mention that Exhibit A2 in the financial statements has a much more detailed breakdown of the information, if you want to look at that. This is all kind of budget-to-actual information. Specifically within the general fund, again, we're focusing on just the general fund. There are many other funds that the Saco maintains that are kind of like a separate set of books for different grants or other programs, but really, most of the funding flows through the general fund, that's why we've chosen to focus on it here. So for the city general fund, it had a net increase in fund balance of about 2.2 million. And so your fund balance is your equity, if you're going to relate it to the private sector, so that means that you took in 2.2 million more than you expended during the fiscal year. And this is primarily due to revenues exceeding budget by approximately 3 million, there was additional state revenue sharing, increased excise tax collections, and there were also better returns on your investment, and interest rates went up during the year, so that contributed to it as well. And then also, some charges for services contributed to that increase of revenues. Expenditures were under budget by almost 675,000. So savings in those categories were primarily related to staffing shortages, where positions went unfilled, and so as a result, positions that were budgeted, nothing got spent, particularly in public safety, where they were only but filled positions there. There was only one department that was over budget during the year, which was the Parks and Recreation Department, and a lot of this was doing due to increases in part-time wages, increasing the minimum wage rate, trying to attract more part-time seasonal workers to come fund and, you know, participate in those programs and run those programs. Within the school operations fund, there was a net increase in fund balance of about $807,000 during the year. Again, revenues exceeded budget by 332,000, primarily due to increased state subsidy and additional tuition that was brought in during the year. Expenditures were under budget by 800,000, again, focusing on the personnel costs. A lot of times, whenever you're over or under budget in any town or school district, most of the time, it's personnel costs that are driving those variances. There were several budget categories that were over budget in total, there were under budget by 800,000, but there were a few individual categories that were under, student staff support, transportation, facilities, maintenance. Those over expenditures were driven by things like additional contracted services for repairs and maintenance on the schools, increased fuel costs during the year, things like that that kind of drove those categories over budget during the year. So that $2.2 million net increase in fund balance that I spoke of, that falls down to kind of your bottom line, and here on this next slide, you see the city general fund, the fund balance or your equity. So if you took all your assets, satisfied all your liabilities, theoretically, what would you have left to utilize going forward? That's what this chart shows you, and it shows you there's a slight trend in the upward direction. It's not really hard to see, there's a little bit dip there from 2019 to 2020, but it is trending upwards the last couple of years. Fund balance is required to be divided into separate categories. There's restricted, which are restricted by external forces like grant funds or state statute, things of that nature. There's non-spendable, funds that have already been spent, and here in this category, you have about $80,000 of prepaid expenditures, they've already been spent, they're not liquid cash, you can't spend them again, so that case, they're not spendable. There's committed, which haven't been any for a number of years, then there's assigned, which are items that are assigned internally by management in the council here. There's various little projects and accrued purchase orders, things of that nature, that are kind of carryover from one year to the next, so that you're not utilizing next year's budget, you're utilizing the budget of the year you budgeted it. It's just kind of a carryover feature. And then there's unassigned, which is everything else, everything else that doesn't fit in one of those other buckets kind of drops down to unassigned. So the unassigned has been increasing over the last couple of years, and then I have another slide in a little bit that'll show you that in a little bit more detail, and we'll talk about that some more. On the school side of things, the school operations fund balance was operating at a deficit for a number of years, and then recently, in the last two years, it's kind of turned around. All the school funds are shown here as restricted, because state statute says that any taxes or funds raised for the school have to stay with the school, so that's why they're all shown as restricted there. And then there's some non-spendable funds as well that are shown pretty, pretty mini school, those are the prepaid funds again, funds that have already been spent, so you can't spend them again. So again, looking at the general fund, the city general fund, and looking at the fund balance, this time looking at it as a percent of budget. The Government Finance Officers Association generally recommends having about two months of operating expenditures held in reserves, which equates to about 16.67%. The city's internal code or ordinance kind of mimics that general recommendation and says, let's have a maximum of 16.67% held in unassigned fund balance. And you'll see over the last several years that that's been increasing. In fact, in 2022 and 2023, you're over that limit, so those funds can be utilized for other purposes, to bring down the tax rates in the future, or allocate to capital projects, or anything of that nature. So the council has to decide what to do with those funds to get you back under that Again, looking at the general fund, assigned and unassigned fund balance in a little bit different way, this time showing you the trend over 10 years, and this is a much better representation of that little upward trend I was trying to point out a few slides ago, really building over the last 10 years, those reserves and that kind of equity, putting you in a safe position to weather any storm or anything like that that may come along, and now those funds are available to potentially use for something going forward. Any questions on the fund balance before I move on? That's about the last I have on fund balance.
I just had one question I saw. Thanks for explaining how you have restricted funds for the school. However, when it's a debt, it's unrestricted, not to the school, it's restricted to us?
When it's a deficit, you don't have funds to restrict.
Understood.
So the accounting law says it has to be unassigned.
Got it.
That's the only time you're going to have unassigned in a fund other than the general fund.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Gunn, go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just want to make sure I'm clear in my head, the amount of net increase in the fund balance, about 20% of that was related to, it wasn't quite 20%, so about 30%, is related to unfunded, unfilled positions. Staffing shortages as positions went unfilled, particularly in public safety. The only reason I'm bringing this up is I think, I don't want to get too excited, I want to get excited, but I don't want to get too excited about this increase of the fund balance when we're running around getting there partially because we're understaffed. And if we had been fully staffed, it would have been impactful.
Yeah, it would have been a lesser.
There you go. And in accounting terms, it probably would have been a material event.
Potentially.
Relatively speaking.
Yeah. So it is definitely a phenomenon that we've seen over the last two or three years, where unfilled positions have thrown a monkey wrench into the budget process, and as a result, you think you're going to spend X, and then you don't.
Yeah.
And so then it falls to your fund balance, but what is the impact that is having elsewhere?
I'm just trying to balance that in the euphoria of, we got all this extra money, well, part of it is because we're having a difficult time filling positions, and we need to do something about that, and that something could potentially, you know, force us to spend, spend a little bit more to make it happen, not necessarily in the area of compensation, but other benefits or what have you. I just wanted to make that point, I appreciate the clarification. And then I also recognize that the 18.45% versus 16.67% of percentage of fund balance is also a very appealing opportunity to potentially spend money, but I would remind the council that we have two major construction projects underway that could conceivably involve some cost overruns that may not be budgeted through our bonding, so to have that cushion available, at least until the construction projects are completed, I think would be a wise fiscal policy for us to think about. Maybe not all of it, but I would suggest a large, a large portion of that. Thank you.
Counselor Gunn? Nope, you were just pointing at. Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you. I'm not sure if this is a question best directed to you or not, but as I look at this graph and the other chart you showed us with the unassigned balance over time, I think you showed us a 10-year timeframe, that increasing, part of me is encouraged, I think, because this strikes me as a sign of fiscal health, and maybe you can talk about that also. But the other part of me is kind of wondering, you know, I think our charter sets a minimum of about 8.3 and a maximum of 16.67%, and as we start to get above that, where we're taxing the taxpayer, we're kind of exceeding maybe what we need for that financial cushion, and is there a point at which we have sufficient buffer and increasing our unassigned fund balance is now no longer contributing to our fiscal health or safety net, and now it just becomes money that maybe would have been better left untaxed or unraised, and how we deal with that?
Yeah, absolutely. That's, I would say, that's probably an issue for the council to work out as to what is an appropriate threshold, and at what point do you start to play around with allocating those funds to offset future year budget expenditures, or not, or just sitting on them and having that reserve in case something comes up with a capital project, or something else happens, like another pandemic or whatever else may happen.
Yeah, exactly. I think there's that balance there, right, of trying to keep a safe cushion, the two months, I think you talked about.
Yeah.
With over saving. Thank you.
Counselor Johnson?
Just for clarity purposes there, that 16.67% is relatively new. I think that goes back to 2020 when we got to that. Prior to that, it was 8. something. So my question, because it has been for as long as I've been here, and probably longer, the suggestion, advice of the auditors that we be at that two months of expenditures, with all the other municipalities that your firm works for, how many other municipalities are at that level? Because most of our neighbors are not.
I would say it's pretty sporadic, it's kind of all over the place. You know, the 16.67% is the kind of general recommendation from the national organization, the Government Finance Officers Association. You know, we are, as auditors, are not in the position to, you know, implement your policy or tell you what's wrong or right for you, because we don't know the projects that you have going on and what you're forecasting out in your five, 10-year plans. But as far as the other local districts and towns that are meeting that threshold, I would have to say it's probably right around 50/50.
Thank you.
City Administrator Bo Henko?
Yes, I just wanted to just add one thing for the council, is to recognize that we're going into, we're going to be going into the marketplace to sell bonds, and we'll have to get a rate, rating, and so the rating agencies look at this in particular, and will look at the 16.67 or whatever it is. So from my perspective, this year, this is a very good positioning for the city as it goes into the, into the market. So that will affect your, what you might get in the market for a bond's discount, or excuse me, the, any premiums you might get into the market, or anything of that sort. So this year is very important that you're at that level, because you're going to be, hopefully, going in for $140 million into the marketplace.
And I would just add that that was the focus of prior councils at the time, was to be in good bonding position, which is why we moved to that two months of expenditures.
Excellent foresight, yeah, excellent.
Anybody else?
All right, moving on. So the next slide is property tax collection rates. This chart's a little bit skewed, because it doesn't start at zero, but it's kind of the upper top portion of the chart, but it's just showing you that in any fiscal year, the amount of taxes that you assess on the taxpayers, roughly about 97, 98% of that is collected within that same fiscal year. And then usually, once you go two or three years out, you'll see with the blue charts, you're collecting almost 100% of your tax assessment. So that's a good thing, it's a very high collection rate, relatively comparable to other towns and cities within the same area here, so that's very good. And then sticking along the property tax theme, again, you'll see here, property tax rates for the last several years hovering right around the $19 per $1,000 evaluation, dipped a little bit in 2023, and then, you know, going forward, that might change with the bond issuances, but overall, pretty consistent over the last 10 years, which is, in what I've seen, not quite consistent with what I've seen, to be honest. Usually after five years, there's a, there's a drop or a high increase due to revaluations and whatnot, so kudos there. This next slide is jumping back to the general fund, looking at your expenditures, basically breaking it down and showing you where you're spending most of your money. The biggest green section there is a transfer out, which is basically your transfer to the school operations fund, so the taxes are raised and assessed in the general fund, then transferred over to the school operations fund. So that's what those transfers out represent, roughly about 52, 53% of your budget, up a little bit from last year, not by a lot, about 1%. And then across all the other budget categories, pretty consistent compared to the prior year. Capital projects actually dropped about 1%, so that was your change there with the education and the capital projects, everything else was pretty consistent from 2022 to 2023. This slide summarizes the long-term liability, so your, your bonds, your capital financing, any other notes payable or finance purchases payable. In accounting terms, we have to classify them in different categories, but it's your debt. It's, you know, it's loans you've taken out. It's, you know, it's loans you've taken out or bonds you've taken out. And then it's split further into two different categories. There's the governmental activities, and then there's the business-type activities. And in Saco, there's only one business-type activity, and that's the wastewater fund. So that's separated out from all the other governmental funds. But you can see there, from 2019 to 2023, a pretty steady decline in the governmental bonds. There have been no new significant issuances of bonds or debt for the last several years. Same thing within notes payable or finance purchases payable. If there were any small, you know, capital leases taken out for a truck or other equipment, it was usually replaced by retiring another one in the same fiscal year. So it kind of offsets a little bit. So over the last couple of years, bonds payables has declined. That might change going forward. And we've already spoken about earlier this evening the $15 million bond approved for the wastewater fund. So this $1.5 million that you see here for the wastewater under the business type, that is temporary financing for the initial stages of the project. That amount has been spent as of 2023, and that number will continue to climb as the project goes further down the process. Also point out two items on this slide that you have absolutely pretty much no control over, which is the net pension liabilities and the OPEB liabilities. So the OPEB liabilities are your other post-employment benefits, things like health insurance like that that are offered to retirees. Those liabilities there are determined by actuaries. There's a lot of estimates that go into it. The pension program specifically is managed by the Maine Pers. They have a big fund that they sit on, and they manage that. As you can see, that in 2022, you actually had a negative liability, suggesting that you actually had a pension asset. So in that year, the actuaries were actually predicting that Maine Pers was overfunded by about 1%. And so that trickled down to you, and you showed a pension asset for one year. And unfortunately, that reverted right back to a liability the next year because of their estimates and their changes in market conditions and how they have things invested. It reverted back to a liability of $4.3 million in 2023. And then the OPEB liabilities were just over $6 million. And it's important to note as well, those are not liabilities that are going to be paid off in one year, two years, three years. Those are the kind of things that are going to get paid off through normal contributions over time. And if those plans ever become fully funded, it might be a pension asset. But it's typically unlikely. This next slide shows the debt, this time per capita, over the last 10 fiscal years. You'll see here, it has increased a little bit over the last 10 years, but it's still below that $2,000 threshold, which is where bond rating agencies like to see it. And then if you look on the next slide as well, you'll see how it compares to other communities. Saco compared to Augusta, Bedford, and Gorm are all, it is relatively low compared to those other communities. So overall, your debt load by these metrics is relatively low.
Mr. Gill, how does, I'm looking at this 2,000 or less. How will it look at like a large school bond that comes? Do they consider the revenue? Because we get reimbursed for much of that. How do they look at it? Do they look at it just like very open? It's like, nope, you have so much in debt even though you have revenue coming in? Or do they look, I'm thinking more of that risk factor. How do they look at it?
I couldn't speak exactly how the rating agency factors that in. It is disclosed in the financial statements that if you have this debt and it is funded by the state, that is disclosed in the financial statements. I assume that they take that into effect and to consideration, but I don't know for sure.
City Administrator Bohenko?
Excuse me. When we go into the marketplace and when we have to sit down with the rating agencies, we will bring that to their attention. We will indicate to them what the net number is. And we typically would probably recognize as a grant receivable as we go forward.
Thank you. Any other questions when I open the floor? Counsel Johnson?
I don't have a question. I was just going back to context, right? So like, these numbers in comparison to our neighbors or, you know, other municipalities, they appear low because, again, it was a concentrated effort towards ensuring that we were in good financial position to hopefully, you know, bond for a school. So yeah, these numbers are likely going to jump substantially in future years. But again, it was all for good-measured efforts. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Any other questions on the general audit process or anything like that? I would encourage you just to read through the audit reports. I know it's tough sometimes with some of the accounting language that's in there. But if you look at the act for specifically, the management discussion and analysis section, it really breaks down things in a more readable format. It has some charts that are easy to look at and visualize. So that's a good place to start. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gill.
That concludes the presentation to council by RKO. The next item is the amendment to fiscal year 2025 City Administrator's Budget, Youthful Maine. It's a new business item, and we're not voting on it. And that goes to Counsel Berman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I received from Youthful Maine a request for addition as a city-supported entity. I forwarded counsel the letter they sent. And I would ask the city administrator include that letter when this amendment does come back for a vote for the public's knowledge. Youthful Maine is a food distribution organization. They fund hungry families and kids through all of our schools here in Saco. They also host food distribution sites at local parks, both during the year and over the summer, really ensuring that those families that need food are able to access it. They serve, as you see from the letter, many Maine families. Their initial request was for $5,000 at the city administrator's suggestion. I cut that in half to $2,500 to bring it more in line with our other external-supported entities. But I just ask that council consider adding Youthful Maine as a supported entity to our budget.
Any discussion by any other counselors? Counsel Johnson first?
I'm going to have to correct you. It's John Stun.
Sorry.
Not that my mother's watching, but she would have corrected you. It's all right.
I know who you are.
I know. I just, sometimes I let it go and other times, depends on how it rolls off. This being, to my knowledge, it's a new request, correct?
It's a new request, that's correct.
Yeah, I'm not looking to debate the merits today. Just, they've never requested or they've never asked before, and we've never funded them, so.
That's correct. They included a financial statement along with their letter, as you can see, that I forwarded to you. I think they've become more active in recent years and as during the COVID time, the food distribution needs went up. The number of Saco families increased. And you'll see that actually their revenues are falling a bit short of their expenditures. So they're seeking additional revenue to continue their mission.
Thank you.
Counsel Hatch?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just a couple of questions, which you may or may not know the answers to. But when we look at the budget that's been given to us, by my calculation, roughly 36% of the revenues that are generated actually go to food. So we have what looks like an organization that has some operating demands on its donations. And a large chunk of that is staffing compensation, about 43%. So my only question is, and we can debate this when we get to the budget, is first of all, is if we're going to give $2,500 and only, you know, 36 cents of every dollar is going to, according to this, going to food, is there a process by which we could make a donation directly to the schools' food pantries themselves and receive a dollar-for-dollar benefit? And I don't know the answer to the question, so I'm just asking it. And I also would like to know whether or not the, and I can go back and try to dig through it, but determine whether or not the school budget itself has any allocation for food for their respective food pantries. So my only question is one of efficiency. We're supposed to be good stewards of our tax dollars. Personally, if there is a way in which we can donate directly to the pantries and get a dollar-for-dollar benefit, I think I would be more inclined to consider that as opposed to this methodology of funding those school pantries. So I understand food insecurity. I'm a supporter of trying to resolve that problem. But I think I'd like to make sure we're just getting the biggest bang for the buck. And you may or may not have the answers in that. I respect that. But I think we should probably get those answers before we make a final judgment.
Yeah, thank you, Counsel.
I'm not directly involved with this organization, so I can't fully answer those questions. I do believe, as you're familiar with, that managing and distributing charity at this scale can sometimes require some staff time, which I assume is what we see there. And of course, the distribution is required in order for the efficient, you know, allocation of that food to those families. But I will reach out and see if we can get some additional answers. And perhaps they're watching now and are already aware of the need.
Donations can also be looked at from a restricted perspective. So if you made a donation, you could restrict it just to food purchases. Any other? Okay. We will get this on a future agenda before the budget ends. That brings us to new business item C, which is amendment to fiscal year 2025 City Administrator's Budget, Bedford Food Pantry. And can I have a volunteer step up to be the council resource? As I am the council resource. Counsel Gunn, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Counsel Archer would like to put forward an amendment to the City Administrator's Budget that would add $1,000 to Bedford Food Pantry in the supported entities' budget allocation.
Any discussion on this? Again, we will not be voting on this today.
Yes, I'll just indicate that this came in, it probably ended up as an amendment because the request came in early enough, but unfortunately, didn't get into the budget. There was a lot of moving parts, as you are aware, when we were trying to get this budget together. So this would have been as, we have not funded them in the past, but it's something that came in, and I recommended $1,000 for discussion purposes.
Any discussion? Counsel Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I guess my only question here is, I support the Bedford Food Pantry. And I understand they support Saco families also. We also have a Saco Food Pantry that I understand is not a supported entity by the city either. And that's what I know. Our BPAC is fundraised for. My family personally donates to them. And so I'm wondering why we're having the Bedford Food Pantry and not the Saco Food Pantry.
I'll divert to City Administrator Bohenko because I am just a liaison.
Well, thank you. Well, thank you. I felt it's not my place to either accept or deny their request. So it certainly, I did bring down the number a little bit. And it does show cooperation with our sister city. So it's really in the hands of the council. It's, I, you know, like I said, I don't feel comfortable just denying it for myself. It should be really, the council should make their decision on this.
So in that case, is there a, recognizing how it came to the city, is there a counselor willing to put this motion forward? I will not be. Do we put it on the agenda or not? Is the question?
I mean, I'm open for the debate because I think, you know, there's been good points raised about whether or not we also support our own existing food pantry, which I think both causes, you know, at least from my perspective, they passed the test for the need. I mean, I certainly watch the Bedford Food Pantry. Gosh, I think it's every Tuesday. Lines out the door. A thousand dollars probably doesn't go too very far for them. But I don't know what we give to Saco either. So for the discussion purposes, I'd keep it there.
Counsel Hatch?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I am going to jump on the bandwagon, started by Counsel Berman here. I would think that if we are predisposed to support the Bedford Food Pantry, which I have no problem with, we should simultaneously provide some support to our own Saco Food Pantry, which I'm somewhat familiar with. Lots of really good volunteers. A lot of good work goes on there. And I would be supportive of moving forward, if we do move forward with these donations, to at least support our Saco Food Pantry to the same amount, if not, if not, a little bit more. Thank you.
Counsel Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Question for the city administrator in your discussions with Bedford. Is there a rationale in terms of their end? Are they having difficulty meeting ends? I mean, because as I said, since we've never seen this before. I mean, I'm all for good neighbor policy, but at the same time, Jill, just for, you know, actual need, what was, did they indicate?
Well, anecdotally, they basically indicated they've seen a lot more Saco residents, primarily from the asylum community. So that's why they put it forth. So they've seen a lot of Saco residents coming in. And so, as I indicated, I put this forward, probably an amount that is the lowest I would recommend. But at this point, I think comments made, I will reach out to the food pantry. You know, if somebody on the council has a contact, make it easier for me to get ahold of somebody. Just email me, okay?
This is a follow-up. That if there's reasons for people to be going to Bedford as opposed to Saco, I mean, if Saco hasn't indicated they're having any trouble making ends meet though, but whether they are or not, if we can shore them both up, I mean, you know, I think that's a noble thing to do, one way or the other, because, you know, it's, I know some people think of the river as, you know, basically an ocean. But at the same time, though, I mean, you look from the air, it is one giant community. And, you know, it's, if you're hungry, you're hungry, so.
Yeah, I would just say, from the perspective of, Yeah, I, I would just say, from the perspective of, again, I'm assuming that most of the individuals that are coming from Saco are properly located, you know, in the downtown area in My Ward, and it's certainly easier for them to get to the Biddeford Food Pantry by foot than it is to get out to Ocean Park Road. That might be the reason, you know, as to why we're seeing more Saco residents.
Anything else? I think there's consensus to at least get it on the future agenda with possible amendments. That brings us to item D, Chapter 118 Harbor River and Waterfront Ordinance Revisions, and that's assigned to Councilor Berman.
I don't know if the city administrator, I see the harbor master is here, maybe to walk us through this.
The Coastal Waters Commission, one of its primary functions is to provide the legal background to actions that are taken by the harbor master in order to keep peace in the neighborhood out there on the pier. There's a lot of conflicting activities going on, conflicting for space, conflicting for time, conflicting for customers who go out on fishing trips, and there's a lot of money involved. Some of those commercial fishermen earn in the six figures from their activity on the pier during the months when it's possible. So as you can see, there's livelihoods, there's, you know, stake in, in their income and in the availability of the resources that can make quite a difference. So we've been working on it now, that I've been a member of the commission for 16 years. And we don't change the laws every year or request a change in the wording. Sometimes we give it a rest for a few years. Sometimes a new person comes on the pier and they throw something at us we've never heard before. It's amazing what, what people can just make up. And it's up to our harbor master to weed through all of that. And when somebody is doing something that affects the peace and tranquility and ability to make a living of someone else, he needs to intervene. And so what you have before you is a continuing, ongoing massaging of these rules and regulations to make them, above all, fair and to make them reasonable and to not be here every year to pest for you, you with some niggly little thing that just came up. And so we'd be happy to answer any of the questions you might have. You've received a, a red line version, which has been approved by the city solicitor, Tim Murphy. And it reflects the thinking of the harbor master at this particular time with the full support of the Coastal Waters Commission.
Any questions for the Chair Katz or Harbor Master Chadbourne? Councilor Berman?
Yeah, thanks, Deputy. Not so much a question, maybe more of a framing comment. I, I was there for many of the discussions. As I understand it, these changes are really designed around three purposes. One is when somebody needs to move their boat, and the harbor master needs the discretion to order somebody to move a boat. That could be for an incoming storm, that could be for an emergency, that could be an event, that could be for traffic purposes. There, there are many reasons why some, some traffic control down there may be necessary. So there's some wording in here that, that clarifies that when the harbor master asks you to move your boat, your boat shall move. Another piece is about some difficulty in, in getting compliance with payment of permits. So this clarifies some of that language and creates some comments for those that don't. And the third is about, I think, people who are, oh, sorry, the third one, third one is about people who are misbehaving at the pier and who are disruptive to, to peace and order. And this clarifies the process by which they may be asked, or the police may be involved to stop their behavior. And then finally, gives some guidance as to people who are doing work along the river or along the waterways and what the process is, if you're doing that work and, and the role that the harbor master may play in guiding you through that, as well as clarifying what that process is. Some of this is really for the ease of those trying to do that work. So now a, a step-by-step process is laid out, so people know what they're going to need, the harbor master can help guide them through that process, although many of the steps are involved giving permits and permission from other entities. So these are, these are really to help ensure the tranquility along those different factors, right? Move your boat if harbor master asks, don't misbehave, and if you do, here are the consequences. Pay your, your dues, fees, and permits on time. And if you're, need the harbor master to help guide you through a, a construction process or a new pier or a new dock, this is the process you need to follow. I think it clarifies it really well.
Exactly correct. Thank you, Councilor.
Any other comments?
Just gonna.
Councilor Johnston?
I'll never get it wrong now. I was just gonna thank Councilor Berman for the explanation. I, I certainly spent, well, maybe even my adult portion of my life, spent a good portion of time trying to find weaknesses, whether it's, you know, ordinances or rules. So I, I fully understand how you may be surprised, but, you know, oftentimes, give me a subject, give me, give me something, and I'll find you, you know, holes and weaknesses with it. So again, I, I understand that we're just trying to clean it up, so it's, it's more enforceable, and I support that. Thank you.
Any other? Thank you, Chair Katz and Harbor Master Chadbourne.
So you didn't find any weaknesses?
Nope. Were they material weaknesses? They were material weaknesses.
Yeah. So basically what's, I'm not doing this forever. Trying to fine tune it for the next guy, so he's not caring to stick around with him.
Yep. No, I get that.
That's the bottom line here. People, you know, the, the idea is like, like Mike said, during the summer, it's really busy down there, and we have to have a flow. And this is what myself and the harbor, the dock stewards are involved, with this, making sure there's availability, float availability for the charter boats to come and go, the fishermen can land their catch without, you know, being stuck in the river and having their catch die. This, you know, it's, it's pretty simple stuff. So anyways, thanks, Mike.
All right. We'll see this on a future agenda.
We're good?
We are. Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
Next item, that concludes item D. We're onto E, new proposed Chapter 153 Outdoor Food Vending Ordinances, and I am scrolling to get to where we need to be. All right, I'm sure it's gone to its. There we go. And this is assigned to be determined. Is there a council who would like to take the new proposed Chapter 153 Outdoor Food Vending Ordinance, draft an amendment to Chapter 230? Councilor Johnston? Go ahead.
I have to find it.
It's 115 on the packet.
Staff have compiled a new draft ordinance, Chapter 153 Outdoor Food Vending. A new ordinance was created from the food truck and sidewalk vendor policies adopted by council on March 27th, 2023. This was a pilot program in which council requested staff to bring the item back in an ordinance form. Staff also recommends an amendment to Chapter 230 to cross-reference with the Chapter 153. The draft ordinance and amended definition have been reviewed by city solicitor Tim Murphy.
Okay.
Basically, because of the pandemic, everybody in a restaurant served outside. We didn't have any rules for this. So after the pandemic, last year, we had policies, so we had some rules in place. It was a trial and error, and if we made corrections, if anything didn't work out so well. So now we're going to have it as an ordinance, which still can be changed in the future because food trucks are in the early stages. We limited where they can be, but if people want more places, you're more than welcome to change it. The check reason we have to change 230 is because it does not allow outdoor eating, so we had to amend that definition so that they could do that. So this is what we were told to do because we had a policy, now we're turning it into an ordinance. Now I can enforce it easier, so.
Any questions?
I have no questions. I was just gonna stay or state that I appreciate it coming back. It, it wasn't a form of a policy, and I stated at the time I wanted it as an ordinance to, to the code enforcement officer's point. Policy is pretty hard to enforce, particularly when it comes to, to fee schedule and whatnot, so, you know, good timing.
Council Berman?
Yeah, sorry, I'm just looking through now. This, this still allows food trucks at the Camp Alice parking lot, right?
Commercials owned, business zones are allowed, yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other?
Thank you.
All right. We'll see this on an upcoming agenda. That leads us to Section 5 Fiscal Year 2025 Budget Presentation, first starting with IT with Director Panero.
All right. Good evening, council. My budget is on page 105, if you want to follow along. So the information technology department, we have about 630 devices throughout the city. That varies every once in a while. We get some, some additional each year. Over the last year, we've supported 1,314 IT, some un, what we call unplanned efforts. So these are tickets that people put in for us for things not working well. We try to keep the planned efforts as a separate kind of system for ourselves. Device management, we're at 99.3% compliance, ensuring that our patches, updates, fixes, all of those things are within what I call a timely manner, which is within six days if they're standard updates, if they're security updates, we try to get those in within three days. Malicious domains blocked, 27,353. These are links that users have clicked on. They could be ads within webpages. They're just computers trying to reach out to things that we don't want them to, to reach out to. This service is provided to us at no cost through CIS, and that is funded another year through them. That would cost us approximately 3,000 a year if we had to pay for that. CIS has a lot of services that we have now started to add to our security posture. We do a user survey. Each person that we close a ticket with, they get to tell us how we're doing. 91 people responded, all five stars, so doing well. And then for phishing emails, we test everybody frequently. I won't go into how often, it just happens. We're 2.4% lower than industry benchmark. That would be government agencies with 100 to 500 employees. Our current rating is about 1.4% failure, so extremely low, and I'm happy about that. So for fiscal year 2024, we deployed 174 workstations. We consolidated our IT management platform from five applications to a single application. It gives us a lot of information all at once with each device. We can, we're starting to see more and more about which devices are failing, what things are failing. We get the monitoring and alerting information right within that, that, that system. We can, before a user notices something is happening, we're usually able to react to those things. We also deployed all new physical server hardware this year while migrating all of our virtual servers over with zero downtime. That was a great solution that we've stuck with. We've had this system in place for about six years now. I could go into it, but we'll, if you want to come talk to me, we can do that at another time. We've reduced our citywide vulnerabilities by about 50% this year, and we're continuing to push efforts to, to get that lower and lower. But every day, we knock out 2,000 and 10,000 pop up. So it's just a, to whack a mole with that, and we're pushing, we're pushing. It just ensures, we, we just want to ensure that we have protections prior to any sort of vulnerabilities coming out. We did reduce our support request times by about 25% this year. Were able to get most tickets resolved within three hours. And I just set three hours. A lot of them are 20, 25 minutes before a user hears a call from us. And with the fantastic help of our communications department, we created a, a new IT training video this year, and it was about our, kind of our information that's left kind of policy, so clean desk type of policy. And I'm sure Emily will tell you, but that video did win an award this year, and they'll have more information on that. So for fiscal year '25, we're going to continue to implement CIS controls. This is our cybersecurity framework that we're, we're utilizing for the city. Worked out pretty well for us. We're now edging into the more expensive, complicated things in the implementation group three, but CIS has a lot of these things that we can utilize through them at minimal costs. We're also looking to enhance our wireless infrastructure throughout the city. By city, I mean our municipal buildings, not outside of the buildings. We're working towards reducing unplanned efforts, so we're looking at ways that we can automate some, some fixes before a user notices and has to put in a support request to us. We're continuing to search for a citywide phone system. Every time we think we have something that we, we like, start reading reviews, start looking into it, and then we scrap it. So that's just going to be an ongoing thing over this next fiscal year. I wouldn't imagine that we're looking to replace our phone system until '26, '27 timeframe. And this year, we got hit with additional CGIS policies that we have to create for the police department, and this is their access to the NCIC database for criminal justice information system. They, they came with us and told us that we have to have 19 new policies. They're created, now we got to go through review and implement and get all of those things going. Any questions?
Any questions from the council?
Comments?
Director Panero? I see none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You, too. Next, we'll have Director Roy present on Human Resources, Communications, and Fringe Benefits.
So thank you all for the opportunity to share the three budgets that I manage. So they're all in one PowerPoint, so we'll go through Human Resources, then Fringe Benefits, and then Communications. I'll pause in between in case anybody has any questions about a particular budget. So I'd like to take a few minutes to showcase a few of our departmental highlights from the last fiscal year beyond, or the current fiscal year, beyond what was included in the budget book on page 100. We have a team of three people working in Human Resources. Carolyn is our benefits manager, Casey is the HR generalist, and then I'm the director. For leave administration, we're responsible for maintaining employee records, managing employee leave, and handling HR-related paperwork and documentation. So in FY '24, we processed 17 separations and five retirements, and we had 23 employees on a family medical leave, eligible leave of absence, including 12 employees on short-term disability and one on long-term disability. The reason we break these down is because working with employee leave and handling onboarding and offboarding, they're all very time-consuming. It's very important to get everything correct, and so having somebody who's dedicated to focusing on that function has been really important for the department. For records management, this project has been led by Casey in our department, and so we digitized 463 I9s. And following the digitization, we did an audit of the records, which determined a number of the historical records needed to be remediated. And so as of April 1st, we've remediated 114. So while revamping our management of records, we also archived 48 boxes of personnel records with our secure off-site storage partner in accordance with main state statute. For recruiting, we're responsible for partnering with different departments to attract, recruit, and select candidates for different job openings within the organization. This involves creating job postings, conducting interviews, and facilitating the hiring process. In 2000, in FY '24, we had more than 820 applicants for 30 vacancies posted throughout the year, and we were able to utilize creative and unique recruiting strategies for various positions. We were able to hire 27 full-time employees and more than 50 seasonal temporary employees. We also process all separations, promotions, and other employee lifecycle changes. For wellness, we partner with Amelia Meyer from Parks and Recreation. She's the city's wellness coordinator. We have had the highest attendance at our employee appreciation event ever. We saw an increased participation in our community-supported agriculture membership raffle, lunch and learn sessions, hydration challenge, and other programs. We also launched a few new offerings in FY '24, including partnering with a local fitness and nutrition club for. and nutrition club for programming and employee discounts, additional reimbursement programs through the Health Trust, and revitalizing our wellness committee. For Workers' Compensation, when I first took over the HR department, we had a modification rate of 1.46 due to our efforts in risk management, overhauling our injury reporting process and safety committee structure, and adding a return-to-work program. Back in FY '25, we've actually lowered the workers' compensation experience rate down to 0.87, which has been viewed as one of the better rates for the main municipal employer group at this time. For Professional Development, you'll actually see a picture of Andrew from the Communications Department and Sean from Assessing pictured on the next slide, with Ralph from Priority Learning. For FY '24, we have continued focusing on providing leadership training to supervisors throughout the organization in partnership with this group, and to date, 13 employees have completed various leadership series, with two participating in a pilot emotional intelligence series. In addition, 15 senior staff members have participated in ongoing professional development with a leadership and team-building focus, and we are continually exploring new ways to make sure employees have all the tools they need in their toolkit to be successful in their roles. If you refer to the budget book on pages 100 and 101, you'll see our core service areas and some highlights. So I'd like to focus on a few of the goals and accomplishments that we didn't cover in the previous slide. One of our FY '24 goals was to explore different recruiting strategies and partner with the communications team specifically for the police department. And so by partnering with the police department, we created new digital and physical recruitment materials ranging from video advertising, job fair displays, new photography, website updates, and more, and we allocated significant resources for this critical need, exceeding our average recruiting budget and efforts for individual vacancies. We continue to explore creative solutions for the PD and all other positions moving into FY '25, and we'll cover that in more detail in the Fringe Benefits budget. For Succession Planning, that is another goal for FY '24, and it's an essential proactive focus for the years ahead, and we'll continue to explore retention strategies and bring creative solutions forward. In FY '24, the City Council approved adding and repurposing headcount in a few different departments to help mitigate some of the concerns of anticipated turnover and better position the organization for our succession planning initiatives. For FY '25, we look forward to continuing to support our employees with a few different focus areas. So we're going to continue to expand wellness programming beyond our current program to include some of the financial wellness and some different lunch and learns for legal services and other important aspects of wellness. In addition, we will continue to prioritize professional development, as I stated before, and focus on succession planning and fostering our in-house talent and making sure people are ready for future positions, and we help them with their own career growth. We continually evaluate and explore compensation and benefit strategies to make sure that we are remaining competitive, and we will, we're in the process of union negotiations right now, and so a lot of that ends up coming forward through that process. And then we continue to explore different recruitment efforts. We're working on some different ideas with some radio advertising, and we've done some work with Spotify and other streaming platforms to help try to spread the word about how great it is to work for the city. Do you have any questions about the HR budget?
Any questions for Director Roy? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Not a question, just a comment. Been able to have conversations with Chief Clements about efforts to find unique ways of recruiting, so I just wanted to commend you and staff for stepping out of the box and trying to figure out how we can resolve these staffing issues. And I'm going to suggest to my council colleagues here, when we have a chance to really work through a housing policy, that an additional focus on municipal, Saco Municipal workforce housing that meets affordability metrics should be high on our list of priorities because I believe it's a way in which we may help satisfy some of our recruitment needs, not only with the police department but other departments within the city as well as our school department. I think School Street's a good example of a step in the right direction, so I'm optimistic that we'll be able to find ways in which we can enhance that moving forward. So stepping out of the box is a good thing, so just keep that up and do the best you can with it.
Thank you. All right, so we will continue on to Fringe Benefits. And so I apologize, in this chart, it's probably easiest to look at page 143 in your budget book. Some of these colors kind of blurred together. So just a few things to highlight for the FY '25 budget is we had to account for a few different changes that are coming. So in FY '24, due to the volume of turnover, you will notice for utilization that we spent more on recruiting background checks and medical testing. It all aligns with the different turnover metrics. We were able to keep dental rates flat but saw a slight increase to health insurance for calendar year 2024. And 2025, we're anticipating other increases just based on utilization. And we also saw an increase to our deferred compensation plan participation, so we have various retirement plans. There was an influx in participation in that particular plan. And then you'll also see we were able to generate some savings for the workers' compensation costs. So impacts to the Fringe Benefits moving forward, so I just referenced the increased utilization claims experience for health insurance, so based on what we're seeing, we see that that can impact the rate increase for calendar year 2025. You may have also heard about the new state FMLA program, so that's labeled as main family leave in here, so rulemaking is set to begin in spring, so we're closely monitoring that to see what that means on an administrative level and what that will mean for our employees. But in the budget, you will see that we budgeted the employer payroll tax portion for what we have for information now. And then we anticipate that we'll continue to see similar recruitment and onboarding costs for FY '25, so we did make sure we had sufficient funding to do that, but also recognize if we come up with some creative solutions and need additional funding, then we'll come back to council for a request at that time. I'll just keep going. So before I get into the details of the communications budget, I did want to expand on what Ryan had just shared with you all. So this picture is actually from last year's award ceremony at the National Association of Government Communicators, where both Andrew and Alex were recognized for their outstanding efforts in different projects for the city. This year, Alex will be receiving an award at the conference in May for an IT training video that he did with Henry Pelletier, so just wanted to take an opportunity to say congratulations to both of them and thank them for their work on this project and many others. And for Communications, you'll want to refer to page 79 in your budget book. So the Communications Department also has a team of three, so Alex is the Communications Coordinator, Andrew is the Digital Media Manager, and I am the Director. One of the responsibilities of the Communications Department is the cable cast and streaming of recorded public meetings like this one. Between council and planning board meetings, more than 149 hours of meetings have been covered, over 38 meetings as of mid-March. We continue to see strong reach for both social media and our e-newsletter. The e-newsletter open rate is 65%, which is up 4% from last year and 21% above the industry average. Our YouTube channel has more than 1 million views with 423.2 days of watch time as of mid-March. And we use a third-party platform to crawl our website to provide us with data for compliance purposes, and we've seen consistency in our ratings for Quality Assurance Score of 93.5 and an Accessibility Index of 97.1. We will continue to work with different departments to have their designated web editors keep their content fresh, and this will help us when we pursue another website refresh that we're planning for FY '26. So just a few other achievements that we wanted to share. For our outreach efforts, we partnered on the Camp Ellis Harbor Fest promotion and coverage, the Climate Adaptation and Action Plan Public Outreach, January Storm Messaging and Drone Footage, City Hall Hours Communication and Feedback, and designing and publishing an accessory dwelling unit guidebook. For Video Production, a few different projects we wanted to share, one was the IT training video I just shared, the refresh of the mayor and city council video that you all participated in, so thank you for that. And then a few other projects were enhancements to the city council chambers, audio and video, including the hybrid capabilities that we put into place last March. And then for cable franchise agreement negotiations, we're still in a similar position as many other communities in Maine, working through that, but we continue to see progress be made, so we're hoping to have an update very soon for you all. And then while Andrew and I were reflecting on how we can't believe this happened just last year, we've seen a lot of success in bringing Alex's position from part-time to full-time, and he has really focused on making sure the video streaming is of great quality. He's been able to scale the volume of video projects that we've been able to produce, and then he's primarily covered planning board meetings, just to name a few new things for this year. So we have identified a few goals for FY '25, so we are looking to explore increasing the external newsletter frequency to twice per month and measure how this affects engagement rates to see if people want more information sent throughout the month or if they prefer to receive a larger newsletter once a month. We'll continue to support the selection and implementation of emergency communications software, so the Communications Department role will be to prepare messages for the new system, training staff, and creating an ongoing public enrollment campaign in partnership with public safety for whatever platform is selected. We will prepare for the website refresh, and then the other items we have already Do you have any questions?
Any questions from the council? Director Roy?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. With the conclusion of that, we will bring up Ms. Presby for a presentation on Saco
All right, well, good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to present. I'm Angie Presby, Executive Director for Saco Main Street. I'd like to extend a thank you to all the city departments we've had the privilege of working with over this past year. We could not get everything done without your help and guidance, and we'd like to thank Mayor McPhail for her assistance with our resource directory website, which I'll talk about in just a moment. In this presentation, I will go over the value our Main Street provides to downtown, our 2024 focus, and provide an update on our funding initiatives. Saco Main Street is a nonprofit economic development agency. We are an accredited Main Street through Main Street America, who is a subsidiary of the National Trust for Historic Preservation. Each year, we have to be reaccredited and are evaluated using six standards. Accredited status is the top tier of recognition. Accredited Main Streets are required to have a full-time executive director, and Main Street programs lead local efforts across the country to strengthen communities through place-based economic development. Our mission is to lessen the burden of local government by working with planning and development directors and local businesses to revitalize Saco's Main Street in downtown. As you can see here, we have a wonderful group of dedicated board members and staff. Saco Main Street attended the most trainings offered by Main Downtown Center last year, and we are a group that is dedicated to advancing our program. The focus of a Main Street program is economic vitality, design, promotion, and organization. The committees meet monthly to discuss strategic initiatives. Here we see what each committee will be working on in 2024. Economic Vitality is designing welcome kits to hand out during ribbon cuttings, is currently conducting a community survey to gather feedback to help us plan the work we do in 2025, and they are supporting the efforts regarding the Entrepreneurial Ecosystem Grant. The Design Committee took a day trip to visit another Main Street community, met with Genevieve from Parks and Rec to create a flower grouping for the planters that will add vibrancy through fall, researching banners for the light poles with a goal to eventually extend banners to cover our district, and seeking grants for public art. The Promotion Committee discusses events, is seeking grants for language interpretation services to have our communications printed in multiple languages as needed, as well as provide interpretation assistance for small businesses to apply for grants. And they are extending our marketing reach to showcase the beauty of downtown Saco to encourage visitors. People who travel to a destination are more likely to spend more money per transaction than locals are. And they are working with a web designer who is rebuilding our website as an in-kind donation valued at $10,000. Our organization is seeking grants and sponsorships, engaging with volunteers, and continuing to build relationships to collaborate with other organizations. Here are a couple of testimonials of how our work is being perceived in the community, and I will shorten them just a tad. Stephanie Sellers with Ease Massage and Manual Therapy says Saco Main Street is an amazing organization. Wayne Morview, Business Development Officer for Southern Main Finance Agency, sent this wonderful testimonial. To summarize, states he enjoyed participating in the pitch competition as a judge and looks forward to working with Main Street in the future. With each grant application, we consistently focus on the needs and betterment of downtown Saco, ensuring that all funds received are reinvested directly into our community. Recently, with the guidance of the grant writer we've contracted, we've applied for grants aimed at transforming Riverfront Park into a vibrant destination, enhancing wayfinding for the Riverwalk, introducing public art installations throughout downtown, and improving inclusivity and accessibility through language interpretation services. These initiatives are designed not only to beautify our city, but also to make it more welcoming and accessible to all. Total grants that we've applied for as of April 25th, $261,361, more than a quarter of a million dollars. Furthermore, with the Entrepreneurial Ecosystem Grant secured by the Main Downtown Center, we have collaborated with the Heart of Bedford to launch a new podcast and website. These resources provide on-demand access to vital information for doing business in Bedford and Saco, including insights into local opportunities and entrepreneurial support. The partnership also led to hosting, the hosting of Saco's first pitch competition, spotlighting and supporting local businesses. We are committed to ensuring that local businesses are aware of the various grants and loans offered by the city. Our goal is to support and celebrate the entrepreneurs who choose to invest in Saco. Specific problems that we address in the city, we align our work plan with the comp plan. We have eight strategies we are supporting and have started or are in progress on most of them. This slide represents the various events we put on, the amount of participants, and the number of volunteers we had. Events are our most significant community initiative. There is something about a festival on Main Street that folks love, and we're happy to provide that. Two of our volunteers, Vice President Chris Talbot and Treasurer Beth Gumry, earned the President's Volunteer Service Award for 100 hours of volunteer time with Saco Main Street. The PVSA is a prestigious national honor, offered in recognition of volunteer commitment by the President of the United States. And that's Chris. There he is. Our funding progress, here are some funding initiatives we've added this year. We created an annual campaign, increased sponsorship opportunities, added the Main Street Market as a fundraiser, sold tie-dye t-shirts at Music in the Park. That was a mess and a lot of work, but we're going to keep doing that. Saco Main Street Club, a monthly donation program, grants, and board member dues. As you can see in this year-over-year comparison, the 2024 graph shows progress towards reaching the one-third funding strategy. Some considerations that we've come across while seeking Some considerations that we've come across while seeking funding, and how Tiff Funding supports Saco Main Street. It's an investment in the future of the community, creates a downtown area that is thriving, inclusive, and filled with opportunity for all, strengthens the sense of place and pride within our community, and it's on-the-ground relationship building with entrepreneurs and property owners. In addition, it's important to note that Saco Main Street's unique economic impact not only enriches the community, but also provides a significant financial return on investment for the city. This is a contribution that no other city entity can replicate, making our organization an invaluable asset in driving sustainable economic growth and prosperity for Saco. There is no more cost-effective program of economic development of any kind in the United States today. That's from Ann Ball. She's our Senior Program Coordinator at Main Downtown Center. In celebrating some wins, we hosted our first pitch competition, we started our podcast, Two Cities One Main Street, co-hosted with Heart of Bitterford. We've contracted a grant writer, we hired a part-time office assistant, we held our first board retreat since 2016. We further defined our four points and set budgets for each committee to work with, diversified our funding sources, and we've heard knowing there was a Main Street program was a deciding factor for our move to Saco. In conclusion, the contributions of Saco Main Street to the city of Saco and its community are measured by social impact and our commitment to investing in the enhancement of downtown Saco's historic charm and beauty. In 2024, we are poised for a year of growth and development. We have robust initiatives in place and are eager to collaborate with the city to realize our shared vision. And additionally, in response to feedback received last year, we have successfully worked to diversify our funding sources, ensuring a sustainable financial base for our future endeavors. Thank you. Any questions, comments?
Thank you, Ms. Presby. Any questions from the council? Or comments? Council head?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just a clarification. So one of the slides said that you had applied for over $260,000 in grants, but your grant writer only started in April?
Yeah. No, she started in January with us.
January, okay. Now, are those applications, were they all funded, or are those just applications that are pending?
Pending.
Okay, great. Good luck, I hope you get you.
Thank you, me too.
Yeah, because those kinds of things are going to swing that pendulum of one-third, one-third. And I know you've been asked to work on that over the last few years, and it looks like you're making some progress, so I want to acknowledge that and thank you for keeping that momentum going.
Any other counselors? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Presby, for your presentation. Next on the list is Ms. Smith with Dyer Library. And congrats on your new role.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's still flashing at me, so I guess I'll just take a minute and see if it agrees.
Give this device about 15 seconds to warm up and we'll be all set.
Next, you'll bring some jokes or something prepared for the intermediary time. Solid White, that's the magic. Thank you. So the first thing on my slide is not that exciting. This is, thank you all so much for inviting us, the library and museum, to present our budget today for you. We are excited to sort of be launching into a new phase of library services in this community. I swear we practiced. We headed down.
Is Ryan still here? We could have an IT ticket for you. It'll take three hours? Well, we'll help get that number down.
Sorry. Okay.
There it is.
All right, there you go. Anyway, thank you so much for having me here today. As you can see, we're coming here with a new face and sort of a new revisioned sense of what the Dyer Library and Saco Museum can be in the years to come. Leslie Brown's retired at the end of 2023 after a long tenure in stewarding the library forward. But, you know, with her retirement, it became an excellent opportunity for the Board of Trustees for the library to kind of reimagine what they had in store for the next phase of services. So they looked at where we are right now, which is that, you know, financially, we're very well-funded by our city, which is an excellent place to be. We have an endowment and some very unique trust funds that allow us to sort of, you know, expand upon our mission in interesting ways. And we're meeting baseline expectations sort of for what a library can be these days. But the question is posed, what do we want to be in the future? And we want to remain this beloved historical heart of the community, where everybody is welcome and everybody is able to enjoy the resources that we have to offer. To get there, we're going to need vision, leadership, and a lot of community engagement. For a long time, the Dyer Library has kind of been an island unto itself, I think, within the city and also within the state and the library ecosystem. And so moving forward, that's something that we're looking to address. Our budget request this year was prepared well before I took my role and is a modest increase to sort of keep up with the cost of doing business, rising expenses, and cost of living and such. It will provide a continuation of the library resources and educational programs and services that everyone expects from our library, but it will also give us space to evaluate sort of what that next step will be to get to a new phase of excellence. For the past several budget presentations that I could review, it seems like you've been given the same kind of dire stats for like year-over-year, showing where we position ourselves in library landscape. And I didn't want to come back to you with those same numbers again unless I had a plan for how we were going to move upwards from there. So I think that there's a lot of room for growth and a lot of things that we want to do. A few highlights that I just wanted to point out, we had an excellent time with the solar eclipse at the library. We had a program with a local weatherman that attended a packed room. We also handed out over 600 pairs of eclipse glasses and had people banging down the doors and calling nonstop to get more. We often run into a problem with too popular of programs where we don't quite have the space to fit the number of different groups that want to meet in the library in the facilities that we have. But the one I really wanted to point out, because I think sometimes the museum gets sidelined in all of these conversations, is this digitization program that's happened over the past two years. We received and just finished working on this very prestigious grant through the Institute of Museum and Library Services that allowed 2,400 objects to be digitized and put into different collections on a catalog platform that's available online for anybody to use for education, for interest. You know, it's just fun to go through and look at old photos and different things. It also helps to increase the accessibility of our institution for those who might not be able to get there physically or due to distance. You know, looking at some of our strategic priorities for the coming year, we want to continue to provide essential resources to our community, whether that's internet and printing, or it's books for fun, or it's the assistance and support of doing difficult research on a complicated question. We're also expanding our services to book delivery to those folks who are not able to come to the library for medical or transportation reasons. And we'll continue with the, you know, history and fabric of our community through our museum exhibits and local events like the Jane's Walk coming up next weekend, where our museum educator will be talking about the Black History of the Saco area in a very different angle. We're also looking to maintain our super-strong youth programming and add in some additional adult programming. What we've noticed is that adults in this community are hungry for opportunities to come and connect and be with each other, and any program we've had has been popular. So the matter is just getting more out there so people can come and enjoy it. We're also looking to build on our engagement and leadership and sort of connect better with those around us. One of the things I want to do is make sure that we're having quarterly sort of meet-and-greets with me and other staff so people can come and tell me what they want from this institution. As, you know, a primarily publicly-funded institution, it's important that people have a chance to let me know what things they would like to see. Can't make all those promises, but it's worth a shot. We also have a new website coming soon, which is very exciting, since our last website was about 20 years ago and looks like it. So it'll be nice to join the sort of the current iteration of responsive websites that actually provide helpful information. I'm also looking forward to sort of increasing the transparency of our organization with regular sort of updates with our city councillor, Tricia Hewitt, and, you know, just being available to present if there's questions for what we're doing and how we can support. We also have a lot of opportunity for collaboration. There are so many agencies and city departments that are doing amazing work. Everybody I have talked to so far has been eager to partner in some way, shape, or form, and I've only been here for five weeks. I mean, it's so encouraging to see how much opportunity there is to build these connections throughout this community. Additionally, we're looking to connect with library networks for a very long time, forever. Dyer Library has been a singular library that did not share well with others particularly, but by joining the Minerva Library Network, we'll be able to expand offerings from our collection of 50,000 books to a statewide consortium of over 2 million books, which will both help to, you know, modify some of our expenses and reduce duplication in areas that we don't need to. The other big piece of the puzzle and requires a lot of collaboration, and I look forward to speaking with a lot more people in this room later, is figuring out how we move forward with the buildings that we have. Our historic buildings are wonderful and unique and so special to this community, but they're also really hard to get around if you have anything less than perfect balance. The number of stairs to get up or down into the fiction stacks is a real problem, and there's some real questions about how to solve that in both a historic building, but one that's also designed for everyone in the public to be able to enjoy. So there's a lot to do, and we're really excited about finding our path forward, but ultimately it comes down to working with everyone in this community to find out how to do that best. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Any questions from the council? Or comments?
Thank you.
Council?
Not so much a question, just a comment, number one, welcome.
Thank you.
I actually had questions, but to be honest, you kind of touched upon all of them in your presentation, and that's encouraging. It's, I can tell you that you're excited and energetic, and again, this isn't disparaging the past, it's just, it's exciting from my perspective to see, because I do believe, not just myself, but I've heard it from the public, that the Dyer was in many ways siloed. And that is actually something that I came to touch upon, but like I said, you've already touched upon it. So I'm excited about the future, really is what I'm getting at. So, thank you.
Any other counselors? Council here?
I just want to thank you and your staff for what you do for our community. I stop in the library every Tuesday to meet with people, and they are very outgoing and helpful. But I have seen what you said about some of the elderly people having a hard time managing the building, so I'm really glad you're moving forward on that.
I would welcome you to tell all of your constituents that, like I said, I'm going to do these monthly sort of meet-and-greets at the main level of the library, no stairs to worry about. The first one will be on May 21st, which is a Tuesday in a couple of weeks from now, from 4:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon. I invite you all to stop by. I hope there will be cookies, but other than that, thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Presby. All right, with the conclusion of the Dyer, with the conclusion of the Dyer Library, it's Mr. Hyde with BSUB.
Good evening, all. I'm just going to take a minute here.
Yes, of course.
I might request Andrew to come and help me out.
It needs a few seconds, I thought, yeah.
You have to shake it a little bit.
Could use it.
Blow into it.
If Andrew stands closer to it, it'll work better.
He's got a device on his body.
I just touched the computer.
Yep. You got it.
There it is.
All right, good evening, all. City Council, Deputy Mayor, City Administrator, I appreciate the opportunity to discuss BSUB Transit, our financial activities, as well as recent achievements, challenges, and opportunities that we have coming down the pike. The presentation I've prepared is fairly high-level and speaks specifically to the funding request that's being made of the city, which is an increase of 12% from $250,000, which was flat-funded over the previous fiscal year to $280,000, and then a further increase in the out-year. There's also some materials that relate to the ridership that we've served over the last few years and trends related to that, and the impacts that the local dollars has here on the community. So at a high level, for those unfamiliar, BSUB Transit is a direct recipient of FTA dollars, which allows us the opportunity to be programmed directly through legislatively-directed formula funds, which there is a whole gumbo full of different numbers and letters and combinations, but we're privy particular to 5307, which is Urbanized Formula Grants, 5310, which is Mobility Access Grants, and 5339, which is Bus and Bus Facilities. Within those programs, there's a variety of projects and stipulations to the way in which expenses and local match contributions come together. Essentially, for a high-level understanding, all of our operating dollars are matched one local dollar with one federal dollar. And all of our projects and capital expenditures, which it's not just capital assets, it's really a broad range of projects and technology and investments in non-operations, is leveraged at a rate of one local dollar to four federal dollars. And so what's really important to understand about that is the economic impact locally that investing in transit provides to the local economy. According to APTA, which is the American Public Transit Association 2020 study, there is roughly five-to-one return in investment in transit and the impacts to the local economy. So if you take one local dollar and invest that in a capital project, it's going to receive four additional dollars, you have $5 of transit investment, and then that's going to be returned fivefold further. So in some capacities, when you're framing the investment that Saco, Bitterford, or Old Orchard Beach are making in transit, there's a multiplier effect that happens the instant that we start to operate programs and projects. Further, speaking to the local impacts, our roster is actively 42, which I'll speak to later about how difficult we are trying to maintain our roster, but many of these people who are working for BSUB Transit live in Bitterford and Saco specifically. So not only are we serving the constituents as riders, we're also serving them as employees. So the funding history and projections, and for those that have sat here in this council previously have seen this chart in the past, again, noting in blue the annual contribution from each of the three partner municipalities. The yellow line indicates the shifting percentage based on the previous year. So when there's significant spikes, you're seeing significant increases from 80,000 to 150,000, or from 125,000 to 140,000, or from 20250. What we're suggesting and what we're requesting is not a significant spike, but rather a well-programmed, three-year approach to continuous funding in transit. Again, requesting for this fiscal year, 280,000, and in the letter that was submitted to city council and staff, we're requesting an increase of 12.5% for 2026, which is 315,000, and then a range for 2027 between 325,000 and 345,000, noting there's significant volatility and fungibility in what might come in the future. So before I go into ridership history a little bit, I want to talk about what we've accomplished in 2024. We improved the service frequency, which for those, again, unfamiliar with transit, means the bus comes more often to your location, more trips per day on your corridor. More trips oftentimes leads to more service. It also allows more people who otherwise might not consider the service to consider it, as it comes more frequently and might align better with their trip demands. We also deployed the first, in Southern Maine anyways, real-time customer information that integrates with over four industry anyways, real-time customer information that integrates with over four industry-standard transit app applications, Google Maps, the Derigo Yumo platform, the Transit app. Again, these are systems that are fairly familiar to transit riders as they come into the region or people who are looking to interact with our transit data at a very high level. On your phone, you can see where our bus is in real time. That application can tell you when it's going to be at your bus stop and actually can tell you how many people are onboard the bus or in a range. Three icons, less people, some people, lots of people, because that is a factor for some people when they're making a decision about whether or not they're going to ride the bus. Additional accomplishments this year was a deployment of brand-new branded by route bus stop signage that has gone in Bitterford, Saco, Old Orchard Beach, Sanford, Kennybunk, Scarborough, and we're still working on the Portland and South Portland communities. Again, diminishing or trying to create less challenge with people understanding and interacting our transit, riding our transit system. Along with the technology investment that allows us to publish and produce and distribute the real-time information, we're now also able to record and report on the reliability of our service network. Our board has adopted a service reliability measure that is one minute early to seven minutes late from the scheduled departure time as an on-time departure. Initially, when we deployed the system in October of '23, we were roughly 72 to 73%. We've continued to increase each month, except in the instances where there's been significant variability that we didn't control, like the Scarborough Marsh or Pointson Ocean Park flooded, and we were unable to meet our service adherence. But today, or as of last month, we're at 77, nearing 78%. So again, showing that we're making market improvements in reliability, which again is another factor why people might consider transit. Additionally, we have played a larger role in the regional and statewide voice of transit advocacy. I sit as the newly appointed Chair of the Public Transit Advisory Council, which is a statewide multi-stakeholder engagement effort that's legislatively directed to provide assessments and review as well as recommendations to the work plans of DOT, in particular, how it addresses transportation needs across a broad array of constituents and stakeholder groups. I also sit as the Treasurer of the Main Transit Association, which is a trade association intended to really provide clarity and concise advocacy platforms for the variety of decision-makers that impact transit at both the state and federal level. So getting back to our ridership history a little bit, not going to walk through all the details, but if you can see my cursor, you can see COVID, we did not operate in April of 2020. Acknowledging the seasonality that associates with, you know, less ridership in the winter, more ridership in the summertime, we are continuously increasing. Pre-COVID, we had 365,000, give or take, ridership in a year. The most recent year, which was June, July of '22 to July, June of '23, we served 258,000 rides, and that ridership is continuing to track in a positive way. Again, there's seasonality in that element. In particular, if you recall, last August and July was particularly wet, so we didn't get nearly the trolley ridership that we would have had in a dry or favorable season. Here's another way to express the ridership trends. For those that are on my board, you're accustomed to seeing this on a monthly basis or attend those meetings. The blue line represents fiscal year '22, the orange line represents fiscal year '23, and the green is the current fiscal year. And so what this graph shows and expresses is that every year, we are continuing to grow ridership compared to the previous month, with the one exception being the most recent month. There was, again, significant weather events that really precluded or prevented the normal ridership that we would have had if we had electricity or the ability to bring our operators who live outside of our communities to operate the services. So I had mentioned earlier that we're a direct recipient of FTA grants, and so this slide represents multiple years of grant awards that we have received and been able to leverage to improve our capital improvement plan or our service operations. The 5307 program I call out because FY '23, 1.45 million, FY '24, 1.48 million, and then as an outcome of the enhanced advocacy and the services that we're providing and the continuous improvement in the performance metrics of BSUB Transit, regionally, we were able to access upwards of $2.2 million in FY '25. Unfortunately, due to our lack of local match to meet that requirement, it was prudent for us to advance that other agencies within the PAX region leverage those funds because we did not have the ability, or will not have the ability, unless there's significant increasing investment from the local communities to provide that match. There are also a number of discretionary programs that are outside of the formula funds that we've won. I will tip our cap of staff saying that we are the only agency that received a Lono Award in 2023, which was to transition our vehicles to battery and zero emission fleet. We also are the only transit agency in Maine and one of only 57 applicants to the U.S. Department of Transportation SMART grant for the planning of a microgrid at our Palmerlo Administrative Facility. This is a demonstration grant that is very, very competitive on a national scale. We're one of only four entities anywhere in New England that has received that funds, those funds. And then locally at the PAX Transit Enhancements Project, which again is a discretionary competitive program, we receive funding for a microtransit implementation. I will say that we are prepared to deploy that microtransit solution as soon as the resources become available, noting that the fleet availability for that type of service has actually been a pretty consistent or pretty significant speed bump. We had anticipated being able to leverage or access those fleet types within seven months of our procurement activities being concluded. We're currently being told it's about 12 months. So we are in the final phases of awarding the technology that will allow us to manage the services, but the actual vehicles themselves are still in delay. Another challenge that we're continuing to face is our operator staffing challenges. I'm not going to walk through the chart here, but I will just express that in evaluating the current landscape of our competitors for CDL and P endorsed operators, we are facing pretty significant competition. I also include the local private firms for one particular reason. Requiring a P endorsement actually is an additional certification that our operators require. People who are heavy-duty and medium-duty operators of non-passenger vehicles do not require that endorsement on their license, yet they're being paid more and also include additional sign-on bonuses, which again is really causing us to face some pretty significant uncertainty related to staffing. I'll call out that we're short two full-time operators, three part-time operators, and supposedly important, given some of the testimony that was given earlier or in other meetings of this nature, our seasonal trolley operators are not returning to the levels that they have on a year-over-year trend. And I can't speak specifically to that, but anecdotally, I do believe it's due to two factors. One, many of the school district operators are loyal to those school districts and see that those school districts are also facing the same challenges that we're facing, and without them continuing to operate in the summer months for those school districts, those programs that are supported by our regional school districts are basically unable to operate. So ongoing and future efforts, and before I get into this, I'm going to talk a little bit about some specific challenges, again, noting funding in particular. Initially, the downtown circulator that was programmed between Bitterford and Saco, our Route 54 Silver Line, was funded through a pilot program through Maine DOT to operate and demonstrate the viability of the program over three years. That program ceases, the funding for that program from the state ceases at the end of this fiscal year. That's a potential challenge. We have operated an intercity bus service that is operated between Saco, Old Orchard Beach, back to Saco, Scarborough, South Portland, and Portland with a program that's called 5311F, which is directed and distributed funding through Maine DOT that has an obligation to connect multiple cities. Traditionally, as BSUB Transit has operated the service, that has been 100% funded through the funding from Maine DOT as well as an in-kind match from Greyhound. We have applied and received additional funding or new funding for the intercity service. However, one major caveat, Maine DOT is no longer going to acknowledge the in-kind match from Greyhound, meaning that if our most productive regional route that connects a vast majority of our communities and serves very important origin destinations along the entire corridor now is at a loss of 50% of the operating subsidy, it needs to continue to operate. So I call out the last bullet. I know I'm kind of bopping all over the place here, but strategic planning efforts. There's really a need for us regionally to consider how we're going to use our resources, how we're going to maximize our service, and how we're going to ensure that those that may have changes to their service, either through new service options or through modifications in the existing service design, are limited in their negative impact, and ideally still being able to show positive trends related to where we do choose to invest and allocate our resources. I've already spoken to the customer information enhancements, statewide and local advocacy. And so lastly, and I apologize if this is not all bright and shining stories, but it's the nature of our business currently. Transit is facing a fiscal cliff everywhere, and staffing is a major challenge. We're undergoing our contract negotiation right now. It is the last few months of a three-year contract, and we are having positive engagement at this point. But as those that are familiar with where those conversations are going these days, I would encourage you to consider, again, the investment in our local workforce, our constituents who are going to receive services for that employee base, and then most importantly, to sustain our transit services regionally. With that, I ask if there's any questions.
Do you have any questions from the council? Councillor Verma?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. It was really informative. I appreciate it. I do have a couple of questions maybe to go a little bit deeper on. You talked about, I think you called it a microtransit grant or project. You said there were some hurdles there. Could you talk a bit more about what the plan is, when it rolls out, and what that's going to look like?
Yeah, great question. If you wanted to see specific maps that indicate the planned service area, I encourage you to look to the Transit Together study, which is available on a PAX website. That's just transittogether.org. It was a regional effort around recalibrating our service allocate, resources of our service allocation, and one common trend that's occurring in many places in the country is to essentially strip away the fixed route services where the ridership levels are not really aligning with the amount of resources that are invested in that particular corridor, and instead replacing it with a functional on-demand service that leverages either telephone communication or app or web-based communication to make a ride request, similar to an Uber or a Lyft. The real goal and objective for our region is to, again, modify the existing service allocation and provide better coverage, potentially even door-to-door coverage, but more often than not, it will likely be at coordinated stop locations within particular communities along Temple Ave, Ocean Park in Saco and Old Orchard Beach, points north on Cascade Road, and then for the vast majority of Saco that is north of, I guess it's northwest of Franklin Street, the community center out to the Turnpike.
And do you have a timeline for when that might roll out?
Initially, the grant application indicated that we were planning an implementation date of October of '24, but given the challenges in sourcing the fleet, we're probably looking at either December, January of '25, December '24, January '25.
Got it. Thank you. A couple of other questions, if I might. You heard maybe as you walked in, some of my constituents from Camp Ellis talking about the Camp Ellis Trolley, and I'm wondering if you can speak both to the particular challenges of that route, but also in general, your organization's strategy and responsiveness to route planning, new routes, how they're planned, and what rural community engagement might have in choosing those roads, routes, and responding to that demand.
Yep, great question. In general, our service planning approach is to identify areas that generate ridership. The key generators are the major factor, and so when we're looking at the seasonal services, which is the trolley complement by and large, we have a number of stakeholder partners that generally are identified as campgrounds, restaurants, primary points of recreation. We engage with those stakeholder groups to identify what the potential ridership levels might be, and then the amount of service that might be warranted or requested of those particular populations. Some folks might be looking for services that are more evening hours, or the Thursday night fireworks at the pier, while other groups might be more interested in early services that will get you to the beach, or allow your family to carry a cooler and spend a day in Old Orchard Beach, or spend a day in Pine Point and places that we operate now. We have had engagement with the constituents that you've referenced in Camp Ellis over the last few years, and our real challenge is rooted in identifying the particular needs of that, those populations and constituent groups, and then secondarily, but primary for our challenge, is the inability to have the resources to operate the service. As I hope you can take away from my presentation, we are facing real challenges, given our resource-constrained environment, to hire the operators necessary to maintain the services that we have today. And so we're looking at strategies to, again, potentially make reductions or modifications that will minimize the negative impacts to our existing riders, riders, while also attempting to sustain, retain as many of the existing riders that we can.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Just maybe two more questions, if you might. You showed us some ridership numbers, I believe, and, yeah, you know, thank you. Are these individual rides? Are these unique riders? How do we interpret these numbers?
Yep, good question. So the bar chart on the left, or the axis label on the left-hand side, is the monthly ridership of our regular fixed route services, which is the blue line. So pre-pandemic, our peak was just under 20,000 in July of '19. The orange bars represent the trolley routes.
And are these rides or riders?
Yep. Unlinked passenger trip is the definition that we use in the NTD. So if there is a transfer trip, it's not included here. So it's not unique rider, it is a trip served to a rider. Do you have a sense of how many unique riders you have? Like how many individuals ride the, ride transits? Some of them may ride it daily, so they may account for 30 trips a month or 60. Some may ride it once. Do you have a sense of how many individual humans you serve? Great question. We attempted to do a broad-reaching survey in the fall and winter of '23 to get that type of information. The response level was not great. We roughly got 140 responses out of approximately 400 to 500 daily trips. So no, I don't have a good answer. The best way for us to parse that data is to use the sample size of our Yumo fare-using customers, because all of that information is housed. We have not done that, though. I would be interested to see that generally. Our fixed route riders, from those that responded, are three or more days per week they're using transit. For the trolley riders, I have no, no sense, other than, again, anecdotally, that many people are coming and staying at hotels or staying at campgrounds and then using our services until they leave.
And then, sorry, just one more question. I appreciate your patience with me. So your ridership has been increasing year over year, you know, post-pandemic. Still doesn't look like it's quite reached pre-pandemic levels again yet.
Correct, yep.
Costs are also going up, including this year. Do you have a sense of how much it costs per trip?
Yep. There's two pieces to that. There is the NTD, which is the National Transit Database, which we're obligated as a direct recipient of FTA funds to submit a series of financial and performance-based details. And then we also have kind of the fare collection per trip. I don't recall exactly the last time I checked those numbers, but it was roughly $1.30 per trip in fare collection.
And how much does it cost to provide that trip? Do you have a sense of that?
Yep, it's about $100.
So it costs about $100 per person?
For all of the overhead associated with transportation services, capital expenditures, facilities improvements, maintenance, benefits, all of it, the number is roughly 100. Thank you.
Any other question? Councillor Hyde?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just want to reemphasize, I happen to be the council liaison, and I actually chair the Finance Committee. For somebody who really didn't understand transit, it's been an interesting association, which I appreciate. I've never seen anybody get more excited about transit than Chad Hyde, so we're very, very fortunate to have him on board. And like the library, he's taken transit and created a clean look with lots of really good experience and is looking at not only the challenges, but the opportunities. So I just want to get that out publicly. I want the council to really understand the, not only the funding we're being requested of this year, but even, even into next year and the year after. of this year, but even, even into next year and the year after. Because leveraging these federal dollars, he's, his agency can do that. Our municipality cannot. And so if we give him a dollar and he gets four more from the federal government, it's a real, I think it's a real crime for us not to be able to enhance our transit with that kind of leverage. And so even at this funding level that we're talking about, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we're going to come up a little bit short of what the potential is to match. And, and so my only point here is that we've got to pay attention to this. And, and, you know, transit, public transit infiltrates all of our long-range planning. It's in our comp plan. We try to talk about enhancing it for our community so we can have fewer automobiles and more people on bikes and walking. And so it's such an integral part, I think, of where we want our community to go. And I'll go on record as suggesting, knowing what I've learned, is that this funding that we have provided historically has probably not really kept pace with the growth and needs of the, of B-Soup Transit. So we're still trying to catch up to where we should be today. So I just want everybody to understand that, that there are real opportunities here that we could be missing, but we're going to get there and we've got to be sensitive to the importance of, of this commitment, not only this year, but next year and the year after and well, well beyond that. This young man works very hard and I, I just think we've got to do what we can to help you. And I think I'm speaking, I work very closely with Doris Ortiz, who's the city council liaison for Bitterford, Kenny Blow, who's the town council liaison from Old Orchard, and, which is kind of refreshing because we're all on the same page. We're all trying to do the best we can in our respective municipalities. So his ask here is consistent with what he's, he's asking in Bitterford and what he's asking in Old Orchard. It's a tri-party, everybody does the same thing kind of arrangement. So I just wanted to, to just make sure everybody here understands the importance of what he's, what he's saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. And if I could have an opportunity to maybe provide a little bit more context on what might have sounded like a very stark comparison related to the fare collection per ride versus the cost operated trip for an hour?
Got it.
We'll use the trolley as an example. If it costs roughly $100 to operate that trolley for one hour, and a trolley fare costs $2, and we do know that we get more per rate, per ride for the trolley than we do for a regular rider. If we carry 40 passengers in an hour at $2 a ride, that's $80. And it costs $100. And similar to the conversation that was had earlier related to the school bond, it's not all local money. That's 50% at a minimum federal match. So if it's $100 per ride, and assuming all the overhead and all the expenses, we're at 50%, that might be $50 for an hour of service that could get, and as what we're working towards is more people on the bus. More people on the bus means more people who are having trips that cost roughly $1.30 per trip. So again, as comparison sake, it's not $1.30 versus $100. It's somewhere in between. Thank you.
So I guess I had two questions myself. One is recognizing you said there was lost money on the table because we didn't have the money. Do you have an estimate of how much that the community lost, the three cities, in potential funding? So it's not like actual loss, just did not need access to?
Good, good question. It's specific to the FY 255307. At the PAX region, we have implemented a process of allocating the 5307, 5310 funds, which, excuse me, is roughly $14.5 million. That's, that's based on a formula that is dictated by the performance of the different transit agencies within the MPO's region. The performance metrics then allow the region's MPO PAX to distribute based on how we've recently performed. And so the max total that we were likely to receive was 2.2 million. So it's just over $200,000 in total in federal funding availability.
So using your formula, we're talking like, all you needed was 40,000 to get 200,000?
There's a little bit more nuance there, but in principle, 200,000, again, if it was exclusively operating funding, we would have needed an additional $200,000 to offset those funds.
Because where I was thinking, I was actually talking with Councilor Hatch about some, I don't think it could happen this year, but next year is, the city of Bitterford and Saco had this, about $50,000 for joint ventures, things like that, in which we would recognize that an opportunity could arrive, there was a fund that the two cities could agree to. I started thinking, is that something that three cities could contribute? Let's say if we all chipped in 33,000, that's $100,000 that is available if needed. You'd still find a process, how to vote on it, like two out of three communities have to agree, stuff like that. But that would then leverage you half a mil, near half a million, including that 100,000. But to one community, it's only 33,000.
Yeah, that, that's a great point. I would also suggest-
Except it would have to take time to build this, don't get me wrong, but-
Absolutely.
Just an idea that it would give you, for us to do a budget amendment for three communities, very burdensome. We have to go through a budget amendment, that we have to go through three meetings, but we can allocate funds to something where this could be available to you within just a one month, or how many times you meet as the three communities.
I appreciate that perspective and would certainly be willing to talk more. I also noting the funding contributions. For context, the state of Maine has one primary and direct allocation for transit operators. It's something called the multimodal fund. Historically, it's been $1.1 million, which we receive historically $31,625. We're spending, as the MTA, PTAC, and many of my efforts and energies are focused on trying to identify alternative revenue sources that can be either legislatively directed or specifically attributed to transit operators across the state, because that number is just paltry. It's, it's really unacceptable from a transportation perspective and certainly it's incumbent upon the municipalities, and I appreciate these conversations, but it's a bigger lift than just Bitterford, Saco, and Old Orchard Beach.
And the second one, can you go back to the ridership statistics, the chart that you had? I was looking at, sorry, I'm having a hard time see the dates, but you had this fair dare promo, a fair deal promo. And when I look at, give or take, what is that, February, March of '23 to pretty much January '24?
We, we-
It looks like you had a promo, which, I don't know what the promo is or what it, what it was, but it looks like you gained ridership because of the promo, but termination of the promo brought it. So it seems pretty, I say stagnant in a good way. Like, if you get rid of that promo, it looked like it would just be flat, at a higher number than you usually have, it's, so it's still up growth. What was that field dare promo? Why did you lose the ridership? Was it solely because of the promo, or were there other market factors that I can't see?
It's, it's a small slide and really great question. So the promo ran from March of '23 to October of '23. The reason, or the promotion itself was all fares are reduced 50%. So full fare went from $2 to $1, reduced fare went from $1 to $0.50. It was across the entire derigo network, which is Bitterford, Saco, Old Orchard Beach, GP Metro, and South Portland Bus Service. Its purpose was to bring people back or to allow people an easier path to consider it, because even though it's just a $2 or a dollar, certainly a barrier to ridership. We don't have clear evidence, because we don't have exact apples-to-apples between previous years and this year, but generally around November is where we get the seasonal drop-off.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I couldn't tell if it was a snapshot or if it was something there that I just didn't see. Thank you.
All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you. Take care. And last, on the new business agenda, is Ms. Saunders with Age Friendly Saco.
Alex, behind the curtain, is helping me tonight, sort of from the Wizard of Oz. So our, our team is coming back, but at 10 o'clock, they'll be back in their age-friendly pajamas this time.
Got it. That's okay.
So Age Friendly Saco has had an amazing year. It's been our best year so far. Next slide, Alex. In, in calendar year 2023, you can see that we expanded our, our volunteer medical rides program. We established a new micro-transit shared ride service. This is actually a door-to-door service that we provide. We also developed a medical rides program for both our neighboring communities of Old Orchard Beach and Bitterford. And that is because we were very haunted by all the phone calls that we would receive from our neighboring communities, and there was a great deal of interest. And so we actually applied for a grant and we were able to support them in starting those programs. We also worked with the planning department to develop an ADU brochure. We now have a monthly meals program, again, all grant-funded. We provide 100 meals a month at the Elks Club. We have been one of the earliest advocates of a home share program for the state of Maine. We started this work back in 2018. In this past year, with the help of Representative Maggie O'Neill, we were able to actually introduce legislation for pilot of a home share program. The company chosen was Nestle. The platform has gone live. I encourage all of you to look at that. I encourage you to all, encourage people that might be interested in, in offering a room for rent in their home and a reduced rent perhaps for some service around the house, et cetera, to, to consider that. So we already have some people in Saco that are on the website, and the, the matching process will start in June. We had our volunteers helped participate in helping to create the city's warming center, and they'll continue the work in hopefully helping to create a shelter. And the picture that you see there is our collaboration with the seniority program at Saco Parks and Rec, in which we actually provided the meal. Our volunteers made the meal for a very popular sock hop that was extremely well-received. Next slide, please. This looks like a very busy slide. This just is to show you, I don't expect you to be able to read all the words, but it's to show you the complexity of our organization at this point. We are a 501(c)(3). We are governed by a board, and you will see that each of those boxes represents the leader of a particular program or resource that we offer. So we have grown significantly and we, we operate, our operations team, who most of the members were here earlier this evening, are, are the leaders of those particular functions, and we meet bi-weekly, and that's how we put together our plan for the year. Next slide, please. So we have 153 volunteers. We currently serve 1,347 residents. We gave, and this is calendar year that I'm giving you the numbers for, we gave 928 medical rides. These medical rides are all given by volunteers using their own vehicles in their own gas. So this is a huge asset to the community, a big gift to the community. We're fortunate to have 17 volunteer drivers. We have, as I said, we have our new age-friendly shuttle, and we initiated this service in October of 2023. Again, this is a micro-transit shared ride service, because there, we know there are many people that can't access public transit and do not have their own personal vehicles. So we provide rides to the community center. We provide rides for essential services like grocery shopping, et cetera. We have provided in our monthly meals program so far, 614 meals that only started in, in June of last year. We have a handy helper program. These are all dedicated volunteers using standards of practice, making small home modifications and repairs. We're able to provide 106 residents with these services. We have tech handy helpers. We have 31 events. I'm going to talk more about that. I'll be very brief, though. We also have a food commodity box delivery program. This is a USDA Wayside Food Program, program, and we deliver boxes every month that are dropped off at the Baptist Church. We delivered 314 boxes. Based on the conversation I heard tonight also about the Saco Food Pantry, you should also know that age-friendly volunteers do all the food deliveries for Saco Food Pantry. So if somebody can't get to the food pantry, people call in and we make those deliveries. We're able to work with our wonderful partner Thornton Academy in our sand bucket delivery system program again this year. We delivered 96 buckets of sand. Our Valentine's Day meal program, this is a meal delivery program, we're able to deliver 147 meals. The picture you see here is our adaptive bike program, another very popular, joyful program that people really, really enjoy. We're able to give 34 rides last year. We hope this year to give more. We hope to get out to Camp Ellis. We hope to give people again the joy of a ride, seeing the, and smelling the ocean. We always do an annual wellness fair that's extremely well-intended. And this past Saturday, Age Friendly Saco actually helped with a shred event, actually managed the entire shred event with our Thornton Academy partners once again, and we helped get rid of 24,000 pounds of sensitive materials. We had almost 400 cars come through the Thornton Academy parking lot. Next slide, please. These are actual grants that we obtained this past year. The first grant is the AARP Toyota Foundation Challenge Grant for $42,000. Our ARPA grant through Southern Maine Area Agency on Aging is a grant that provides our meals program funding. And I'm just going to add that the, that program runs out in September, and we hope to continue the meals program, and we'll be doing that by looking at either charging for the meals and/or sponsorships. We are, the Huntington Commons Grant is a grant that I referred to in the past in terms of the grant that we're using to support our neighbors in, in starting their volunteer driver programs. We provided not only our assistance in starting the program, but we also provided the technology for them as well. Chef Grant is something through the Maine Council of Aging. It's a Hanford-funded grant, $12,482, addressing social isolation, Maine Charity Foundation. That was, again, to support our transportation program. And Maine Council of Aging tablets, $3,000 for 30 tablets that we received, that we will be gifting to our, to our residents that are interested. So the picture that you see is a new program through the chef program, which is a crockpot program. We're going to be giving out crockpots. We're going to give people meals, how to, how to cook in a crockpot, and it's, again, is to try and help people live healthier lives and learn how to cook. And the total grant funding that we received this past year was $107,682. Next slide, please. So this slide is, is an example of what I call the domino effect. So the top, the top picture you see is a gift that we received from B-Soup for a very well-used van that was no longer in service. So we're able to use that for our, our age mobility shuttle service. Southern Maine Area Agency on Aging had discussions with us to say, perhaps we could work together and perhaps we could give you our 2019 Ford Transit van. So the lower picture is, is a gift from Southern Maine Area Agency on Aging in return for us providing some transportation for their needs for their adult take-care program. So we are in the process of gifting the B-Soup van to Age Friendly Bitterford so that they too can start their own micro-transit program. Next slide, please. In addition to what you've heard, we had some additional collaborations. We worked with Bitterford Housing. We were asked by Bitterford Housing to organize the Northern York County age-friendly communities, which are Old Orchard, Buxton, and Bitterford, and together we all worked on the Comfortably Home Program so residents could receive up to $3,000 worth of home repairs and renovations. 30 homes were visited for this program. This Comfortably Home Funds all come from Maine State Housing Authority. We also are in the process, and we do believe that we have a real good foot in the door. We'll be getting a halftime position as a community connector through an ARPA grant through the State of Maine Cabinet on Aging. So we will be able to now work more directly with having somebody doing home visits in the community. I've been having discussions with both the Police Department, Rebecca Lyons, and EMS on how we can, again, better serve our residents. Next, next slide, please. I just need to make a point about that reaching out to our community is very important. And again, we need to stress that we can't reach all of our community just by digital means. So we send out 1,500 newsletters. We know 1,042 of our residents have email. We know 465 of them do not. So they still, they still rely on print media. I can't stress this enough, that there's a large segment of our population that still needs to receive mail, and so we do that on a quarterly basis. Newsletters are the only way that we can reach out to them. Which brings me to my next slide and the work that we've done with technology, trying to connect our community. So again, through, through eight, through funding, we were able to, and this is besides the 30 tablets that we just received, we were able to gift 25 Lenovo tablets to residents, 66 Echo Dots. And I've, I talked about this in the past and I won't belabor the point, but Echo Dots are often used as a virtual personal assistant for our older residents instead of like a often used as a virtual personal assistant for our older residents instead of like a Lifeline subscription, which is hugely expensive. So we set them up with our volunteers. They're connected to our non-emergency fire department number, and it's just been a real fantastic program, well-received. We know that cutting the cord is important for some of our residents on fixed incomes, and that it's very difficult to understand, you know, how to do that. And so we have started a new program of helping them learn how to stream and been also distributing Roku's and Amazon. When I say we give these out, this is never City of Saco money. This is always grants, that we have these programs. So, next slide, please. So our value to the community, and we are very fortunate to have a very robust database system. We have 8,222 volunteer hours that were donated, and we, our volunteers traveled 10,372 miles in service of our community. Last slide, please. So when we ask for your support tonight, we're asking for your continued support, it's actually a little less than what we asked for last year. We can show that we have received 107,000, over $107,000 in grants. The value of our volunteer hours is 246,660. We also had some sponsored meal events. So the grand total is 356,342, which does not account for the assets that we also given. So I would say that we, the value is over $400,000. Next slide, please. I promise this is second from last. So I like to say that we are low-cost but high-value. So for every dollar of support by the City of Saco, we have provided $5 worth of services to our residents. So again, we ask for your continued support, and I'm just going to finish with one last slide about some of our continuing challenges that we're going to be looking at for this next year. The picture that you see is a picture of our operations team, that we continue to struggle with trying to find space for community events, office functions, meeting space. We do do fundraisers, so stuffing envelopes. As our assets continue to grow, we have to rely on partners to help us. So we hold our community meals at the Elks Club. They allow us to store some things there, but many of our dedicated volunteers store a lot in their own homes. Phil can attest to that. We were recently able to purchase an industrial refrigerator for our meals program, but we had no place to store it. So it's at the Saco Food Pantry. It was very gracious, and they're obviously a wonderful partner of ours. We have our Saco Mobility Van is parked in the parking lot of the Most Holy Trinity parking lot. And again, it's a great location for it. We do have two dedicated van drivers for our micro-transit program. And we are very grateful, because last year we received some additional support, and we're able to purchase a shed in order to store our chat, which is wonderful, because now we're also storing some of our additional stuff in there as well. So thank you for your time. Sorry it's so late.
No worries. Any comments or questions from the council? Oh, Councilor Berman?
Yeah. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you for all your work. Tremendous what you guys accomplished with so little, providing a really essential service to so many of our community members that simply would go unserved if not for your group. It's a huge amount of volunteer hours. It's a giant team you've assembled, and just really provides an essential service for so many people. So thank you. Thank your volunteers. Thank your leadership committee. It's just really impressive.
Thank you.
Councilor Hewitt?
Again, I want to thank you. I had the opportunity to attend one of your community meals and meet many of the people you served and your amazing volunteers. So thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you.
Councilor Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Director Saunders, I just want to piggyback on what's been said, and at the same time, it's the sheer amount and the strength of the services you offer, and balance that with the incredible amount of fundraising you're able to do to keep these programs solvent. I would simply say to my fellow councilors that this is about as sound as an investment of the City of Saco can do for a third-party organization that we could possibly do, just for the sheer amount of people whose lives are bettered in a variety of ways that we would not have the capacity to finance on our own. And the fact that you all do this, and, you know, you don't pick up a paycheck for it, though. So I mean, this is something that's, I mean, this is Yelman's work, though, and your crew is just dedicated beyond all ends. And I'm a little biased as liaison, but that being said, I get a front row seat to it, and you folks do tremendous work, and this is a gift to the city.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it, Don.
Councilor Johnson?
Going to go first, or? Yeah, no, along the same lines. I think it's remarkable what the organization provides and where it's gone from 2016, I believe it was. I didn't expect this. So, I mean, it's far and away what I thought we were getting, you know, when council, you know, supported that funding then. And I would agree, the 74,000, I mean, we get far more in return. Most importantly, you know, we're taking care of or assisting our elderly population. So like everybody else, thank you, and thank you to all the volunteers.
Thank you.
Councilor Hatch?
I'm going to add to the group thank you with a personal thank you for keeping my wife busy in retirement.
Very busy.
Very busy, but she's enjoying every minute of it, and the strength of this volunteer team that you've put together is absolutely phenomenal. And I take great pride in having been part of the beginning of this and seeing where it's come. It's just absolutely fantastic. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We are very, very fortunate to have amazingly dedicated volunteers. So, thank you all.
And keep up the good work. Take care.
Thank you.
That concludes Section 10, brings us on to Section 11 Administrative Update by City Administrator.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. The City of Saco has scheduled SOAR repairs on Route 1, Elm Street, beginning at the intersection of Route 1 and Route 112, starting at 7:00 a.m. on Tuesday, May 7th through Friday, May 10th. Unfortunately, Elm Street will be closed to traffic during construction activities between the intersection of Scammon Street to the intersection of 112 due to road width and utility locations. In addition, traffic detours will be in effect, where southbound vehicles will be detoured into Main Street. Traffic will be allowed to use Elm Street from Main Street to access Route 112 only. Northbound traffic on Elm Street will be detoured at Scammon Street. People will have to expect some delays. We all appreciate your patience. This was some emergency work that we had to have done. I also want to welcome Demetria Pellegrino, our Assistant Planner of Compliance. Demetria recently joined City of Saco as the Assistant City Planner of Compliance. She joins the City of Saco with a background in planning, economic development, and banking. She served her most recent role as Deputy Economic Development Director for the City of Westbrook while holding elected roles as Vice Chair to the Limerick Planning Board and as a member on the Limerick Charter Commission. She's finalizing her Masters in Policy Planning and Management with anticipation graduation in May of 2025. I'd like to extend a warm welcome to Demetria. And the next meeting, May 6, Monday, May 6, we will have a public hearing on the fiscal 2025 budget.
Any questions for the City Administrator? Seeing none, we'll move on to Section 12, Council Discussion and Comment. Any councilors have a discussion and comment? Councilor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Just real quick, during the IT presentation, I was reminded that part of their accomplishments this year were to bring this room up to compliance with shared audio and video, as would be needed for streaming and interactive services. I believe we're waiting for a new online policy for council, and I just want to reiterate my support for having that done as soon as possible, so we can engage the public virtually also.
Anybody else? All right. Seeing no other, that leads us to adjournment. Yeah, I'm not going to call adjournment. Just going to stay and wait until I feel like calling adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Roll call. Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
Councilor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0 to adjourn at 10:19. Take care.